Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September the 5th. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the clergy of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the First States, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with due diligence.
Thank you. Please be aware, the meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. The first item of business is public comment, so this is for anyone attending who would like to raise an issue that is not on the agenda tonight, or who has a question or comment they would like to ask the board or staff. Is there anyone here who has a question or comment? Steve?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the board, Chris and Kristen. Firefighters are starting to get some of their checks back from property tax rebate, and it's a very positive impact, and thank you for your stepping forward and doing the supply new ordinance. It was really very positive. So, I've been getting very positive comments, so thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else with a question or comment, or a new item of business? Very good, we move on to agenda item number four, which is our annual presentation from the Westchester Public Library. Ms. Dow?
Yes, thank you. I'm Victoria Dow, the Director of the Westchester Public Library. Thank you very much. Just wanted to let you know that we had a very busy summer. We're back to pre-pandemic numbers, and we're very happy about children coming in, participating in our summer reading program. We had a lot of programs that have been ran this summer. We're going to tour into, you know, busy fall as well. Our story times are starting up again, and we have some adult programs as well. One that might actually be of interest to West Goshen residents is, towards the end of this month, it's on composting, and it's offered by a company called Mother Compost, who have a contract group for all Westchester people who sign up for composting. But they also teach classes on how to run a backyard pile, as they call it. So, if you look at the Westchester Public Library website, WC Public Library Network, and click on Events, you'll get to our calendar, and you can find that entry and sign up for it. It is a hybrid one, so we're both having people in-house, as well as joining by, so there are two options there. I also want to let you know that we have been doing a lot of outreach to our other service area townships, Thornbury, West Town, Birmingham, and East Bradford, to ask them to consider increasing their allocation to the library. We've had some success, three of them have done that. East Bradford, they've doubled their allocation. West Town has increased it there now at about $1.50 per resident, I believe. And Birmingham also increased their allocation. So, that is something that we're asking each of our municipalities to consider, as you look on your budget for next year, if you would consider increasing your allocation to the library. It means that we can put more money into programs, as well as materials, especially books, which are still in demand, and other things like hotspots that people do borrow. You know, when you're going on a trip and they want to take one along, or somebody needs one because for some reason their internet at home is going through. We do pass the dollar a day, which is just to help offset the cost, part of the cost of those. We have those available, and we have a lot of other things. Museum passes, local attraction passes, most of which are then on print and go, meaning you can make a reservation for a particular day that you know you want to go, you print the thing out, and on you go, with your library card and your reservation form. And these memberships mostly cost us about $200 to $300 a year. We'd like to add more, because there is demand, so that is the kind of thing that an increase in allocation from our municipalities will support. Now, I'm going to be quiet, and Steve promised a few things to say about how he's like his family's used to library.
Yeah, I mean, just a couple of words. You know, we've, as a family, we use the Westchester Library. Actually, my mother took us there back quite a few decades ago. And even when the Chester County Library was in Westchester, so you might remember that, before they moved, we still went to the Westchester, because it was a nice, quaint, small library, for our service areas, kids. We took our family and kids there. It was always a great pleasure to pick out books, read at night, kind of instill reading in our kids. And two of my kids actually volunteered at the library a period of time. We support them financially as well. And I'd encourage you to look at what the township's done, and I think it's really a huge asset for the community, and I think a lot of West Goshen residents do use it. Summer reading programs, we use to do with our kids all the time, and I think it's a work well and have it for us to spend our money on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. If you have any questions for me, or else you'd like to know?
Does the board have any questions, Ms. Dow? I have one for you. You mentioned funding, and I'm just curious as to whether you had any early indication yet of your funding level for 2024 from either the state, the county, or the Westchester Borough?
Well, Westchester Borough is pretty stable. That is actually a village, which was passed in 1988. So, we get $105,000 a year in cash, and the borough also takes care of maintenance, general maintenance of the building, and the utilities. So, that comes to the, you know, between, depending on how much maintenance needs to be done, between $115,000, $120,000 a year on the borough. The county, the member libraries, other than Chester County Library and Hankett and Hanks Branch, which are a department of county government, we divide up a pot of money that the commissioners allocate in support of those other member libraries, the other 16 libraries. They did increase that amount from, I think it was 750,000 to over 800,000 a couple of years ago, so they have, they have increased that allocation. The state, we never know. It all depends on what the budget looks like, whether it's passed. I know that for this, so for the 2023-24, and we get the payment in January, we'll get that in January '24, it is level funding. It is not increased. But, you know, we advocate every year, talk to our representatives, senator, and ask them to support funding for libraries. Library funding is part of the Department of Education funding. So, if you see an increase in the Department of Education, it doesn't necessarily mean that libraries got anything. Something in the Department of Education is not necessary to libraries. And of course, we do our fundraising. I will add that less than 60% of our funding comes from tax sources, so the rest of it is made up of fundraising.
Okay, thank you. One last question for me. You mentioned that the utilization of the library is back to pre-pandemic levels. What are your measures of actual utilization? Is it books borrowed?
It's books borrowed, it's traffic through the door, and in this case, for the summer, it's the number of children who signed up for the summer reading and the traffic that we saw in the building, and it's not too much to that level. We had just over 329 children sign up for the summer reading, and pretty high checkouts of the June and especially July.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Is there any else on the board?
Yeah, I have a question. The, um, the Haxton Library, is that a separate budget, or is that still considered Chester County?
That is, the Library in Haxton is the Chester County Library. It has a branch, the Hanks Library of Lionville, and that is a department of the county. So, that budget is part of the county budget, all right? They get state funding, because they serve, it's the West Whiteford Township and a couple of townships right around there, and they also get state funding for services that all the libraries partake of. So, the databases that the library system subscribes to, that's one, ancestry.com, that you can use in the library, that's paid for by the Chester County Library on behalf of the whole system. But yes, that's a separate, it's a separate, but actually, each, each library, and there are 16 independent libraries in the county, each one of us controls our own budget.
Okay, but the county contributes to each of them separately?
Yes, in a separate pot of money that is not, not part of what you see on your property tax. It's a little confusing. What you, the village that you see for libraries on your property tax is for the Chester County Library and the Hanks Library.
Okay, Chester County being the one in the borough?
In, in Haxton.
Oh, in Haxton.
In Haxton, yes. Yeah. They used to, they used to have a building in the borough, but that was...
The day building.
The day building. Well, that was like, what, 25 years ago? Or more, pretend? They moved out of there a long time.
That's where the county building is now.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Are there any other questions for the board?
Well, I just want to thank you for coming out and giving the report, and I do want to say that I know for a fact that a lot of people in West Goshen do utilize Westchester Public Library.
After the borough, highest, highest usage is from West Goshen, yes.
Do you have a number in mind?
Oh.
No, I mean, do you have a number of what you're requesting?
Well, you know, it would be really great, and I realize, you know, this is an incremental thing, you know? The funding task force that works to support libraries making these reservations, also reports to the commissioners, has it all, $3 per resident. So, you know, that's not going to happen all at one time. That could happen over a period of, I don't know, three years, whatever. So, I think West Goshen isn't quite at $1 per resident yet.
Correct. Fusion is less than a dollar, accounted for the principal.
Yeah, so it would be really great if, okay, maybe for 2024, to get to that $1 per resident. You know, whatever the population is for 2029, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Twenty-three thousand, twenty-four.
So, that, you know, that would be, I think that would be a way to increase.
I think that's a fair, or what?
Yeah, we do know that we've not increased the contributions since last, those 26,000, seven years now, so eight years next. Well, thank you.
Did you used to charge for certain checkouts of items such as DVDs or tapes?
We did. We used to, and we don't anymore.
Have you thought of doing that again to help?
To be honest with you, we stopped doing it, because the circulation of the DVD collection and the audiobook collection was going down, because, you know, people have access to so many more sources for that kind of material, and the collection was just sitting there. So, we said, fine, you know, let's just, you can borrow the DVDs, the same as you do any books, and it has brought the circulation back up again, so at least the collection's not sitting there collecting dust. But yeah, no, we're not going to do that again. It's just, it's not worth it.
Do other libraries do that?
I think we've all stopped, because it's something that, you know, we try as much as possible to have uniform circulation guidelines across the system, so that your experience, for the most part, like if you were to go to Melbourne, you would find the same checkout time period, or, you know, overdue fines, all of that, as you would at Westchester. We try to keep that uniform throughout.
Yeah, are there any other services that you're providing, charging?
Just the hotspots. And that's simply because, and we get them at a, at a government rate. I only pay $20 a month for each of them, but it helps, you know, bring in that amount of money.
I'm sorry, what are those?
Hot, oh, I'm sorry. Hotspots are, well, you know, about that big, they're allowing to connect to the internet. They basically work sort of the same as a cell phone.
So, you charge for this?
For those, a dollar a day, yeah.
And then you still have your everyday fines?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I know some libraries in the country are getting rid of those, but that's probably not going to happen here anytime soon, because the commissioners basically said...
Don't be shy, don't be shy about charging for stuff.
Yeah, I, you know...
I mean, with, with user discretion, but still.
I understand that, and, you know, on the, on the other side of it, because we, we are supported through tax dollars, and we are there from the entire community, the, the ethics behind it are to not charge except, okay, overdue, overdue fines, and for these internet connection units, but to leave it, otherwise, just, yeah, you can borrow this free. I mean, we're in the borough, you know, we do have people who, for whom we're it, in terms of entertainment.
Do you have a parking lot?
No.
Are there meters in front of the building?
No. The hardest time to park is usually either Monday morning or Tuesday morning until 11:00. And, you know, as long as the weather's good, it's not so bad.
All right, other questions for us, Dan? Again, thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate it. Thank you for the update, and we'll certainly reconsider.
Excuse myself, because I don't remember.
All right, good luck. Okay, next on the agenda is agenda item number five, which is discussion on possible approval of resolution number 21, 2023, considering granting final land development approval for a preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for Capital Enterprises Acre for the construction of a fast food restaurant with drive-through service and a building addition at the West Goshen Shopping Center at 909 Paley Pike. So, it's a representation from Capital Enterprises here today. Welcome. Brian, I have you down as leading the board in the conversation through this. If you'd drive anything, we're looking to you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Carrie Nace. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild, representing the owner-advocate. Also here with me this evening is Mr. Christopher Robbins. He's a principal of the owner, Capital Enterprises. They've owned the property here since it was originally developed back in 1950s, '60s. Also here is Deborah Mills Houston, Vice President of Leasing. We have David Stewart and Juan Canno, both from T&amp;R Associates, as well as Sandy Kosse for McMahon, our traffic consultant. So, you may recall, we were here last summer, back, I believe it was, end of June, beginning of July. The owner is proposing to redevelop the center with a fast food restaurant out along the front, along Paley Pike, adjacent to the Park and Ride, as well as to expand the former Kmart Center, which is back, the large area to the back of the center there, that's remained vacant for many years now. We do have a possible new retail tenant there. The expansion is actually enclosing the former Garden Center that Kmart utilized. So, it's still within the same footprint, but putting walls up around the Garden Center. When we were here last July, we were proceeding to the zoning hearing board. There was certain relief that was needed in terms of setback. We went to the hearing, certain relief was granted, certain relief was denied. The relief that was denied primarily related to disturbance of steep slopes, as well as a landscape planting strip. So, after we received that decision, we did go back and revised the plans in order to comply with the decision of the zoning hearing board. We submitted preliminary final land development plans in October of last year. At that time, we did talk before the planning commission for them to formally accept the plans. When we did that, and we reviewed the layout with them, they raised certain concerns with regard to internal circulation, just the current conditions of the center, given the age of it, and pedestrian connectivity between the various stores. So, we took a hard look at the comments that they had given us, given the fact that we weren't handed with a blank vacant piece of ground. We were really trying to make improvements to an existing center that's been there and had certain constraints that we needed to abide by. We worked very closely with township staff during that time to revise the plans, to address the comments with regard to internal circulation, and revised those plans, submitted them, and around December of last year, and since that time, have been continuing to work with township staff, as well as outside agencies, Pendot, DEP, in terms of getting the necessary approvals for this redevelopment. So, what I'd like to do is have David Stewart come up, and he can walk through the improvements that are being proposed, and primarily the improvements that we're making within the existing site conditions to create a more pedestrian-friendly, as well as internal circulation within the site itself, and then we can certainly answer any questions that you have, and go over any comments from the township engineer.
Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, my name is David Stewart, T&amp;R Associates, we're the civil engineers for the project. Mark, I want to thank you for your assistance as we go through this slideshow. Can you please go to the second? Again, just wanted to provide, wanted to provide an aerial view of the existing shopping center. As Carrie noted... Thank you. The existing shopping center is located at 909 Paley Pike, Zone C2, it's approximately 36 acres. Some existing tenants within the shopping center that some of you may be aware of are the Acme, the LA Fitness, with a few other, approximately 17 tenants. Currently, there is an unsignalized intersection along Paley Pike, it's shown there, and there is a signalized intersection there that allows for left out of the shopping center. This provides an overall view of the proposed improvements. As Carrie noted, this has evolved through conversation with township staff, with outside agencies, with comments received from... Hi, the commission? Essentially, we are showing two major redevelopment areas, that being the one along the Pendot Park and Ride, that being number one, which is for the proposed fast food restaurant, the second one being the expansion of the existing, here we go, the existing commercial facility, formerly Kmart. So, the park and ride will remain, that's that area right there, so we are not impacting that at all.
So, the red is where the restaurant is?
Correct, the fast food restaurant is located there. And then, as Carrie noted, the darker pink or red is where the Garden Center exists today, and that's where it's going. I'll stop there for a second.
Are you planning on any EV charging stations in any of these parking spaces?
As of today, there aren't any EV charging proposed. I will not speak for our client, but the tenants, we will coordinate with tenants for EV parking, and we, several tenants have, are revising their parking standards, and we'll work with them to incorporate EV parking into the redevelopment areas.
Can I just say one thing to the board? Right now, they're at the bare minimum they need to meet township ordinance, parking parks, take away any spaces that are parked unless the zoning board requires, so they cannot swap spaces in other areas.
EV parking would be equivalent space, so it's not a loss of space.
It won't use any spaces provided.
Yeah, okay.
And, and as David said, there are some tenants that do have an EV charging station program. One of them, Acme, who has reached out to us and we're working with them to provide EV charging stations, so there are tenants that are proposing to put them in or working with them to be able to do that.
Mr. Stewart, what's, what's happening in the northeast part of this shopping center here? It looks like there's an extension of a walking path sidewalk. Is there any change to the parking in that area?
So, I can walk through that area, Brian can go to, and I'll just move around the slideshow, eight, six, possibly. I'll start with this area. As noted, the lighter pink, the lighter red is the existing commercial building. The expansion within the Garden Center is the darker pink or red, to answer your question specifically, one of the comments we see when coordinating with township staff and planning commission related to safe pedestrian circulation within the shopping center. So, one of the things that we are proposing is, as you can see right here, for the walking path, we are removing or taking up existing parking stalls and providing a safe path for pedestrians to be able to access the commercial space from these very parking spaces. So essentially, you'll be able to walk from here across, crosswalks, come into a raised, a raised, I'm reading, sorry, traffic calming measure, sorry, speed up here, and then walk across and access the building, the current existing engine there.
So, where's the Garden Center, that's the pink?
It's the darker pink.
Okay, that's the one that's going to have walls?
Yes, walls, yes. So currently, it's open if you go there.
And what's to the right of that parking spot?
Parking spot, yes.
So, I'm sorry, is this just striping then, or is that a, a sidewalk that goes up?
Right here, around the sidewalk.
Up, out extends that?
No, 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 that's just striping. That's just striping. And if we have, we're proposing to give pedestrian signs, we're going to intersect this.
So, back there is wood, so the walkway is just going to end with grasses?
Essentially, yes.
Because wood's all back there.
Correct, we are not disturbing any of the woods to the north.
To provide pedestrian access to this parking field. If there's a parking field back there currently, this is to provide a pedestrian walkway from the, take one spot and follow it to, to the door. We'll come in, this is one of the, one of the things staff, we asked for, was we'll go back with some traffic calming measures because of the loop rule. One of the measures is right here, this is a speed table where we're raised island, your drive-through, and then this is a crosswalk as well. So, it'll serve two measures at that point. And then there's a sidewalk along the building, a sidewalk along the outside of the current line here as well, to bring you to the front, with entrances.
So, there is no entrance to the building on this east side where this new building addition is? That is not an entrance to the building. It's parking along the wall there, but then you can come along the sidewalk to this front to get into the building, correct?
Correct, we're maintaining the existing construction points of the building, and our client can speak to this more, but as far as commercial redevelopment, and this is presented to the boards, as far as security purposes, it's easier for the tenants to be able to secure their building with one entry.
What about store over here?
Yes, so we're proposing a underground store over there, based in, located with that blue dash mark.
Around the parking lot?
With underneath the parking lot, yes. It can, it can probably fill this down in pipe.
So, what's the design basis for that? How much, what collection area is it designed to accommodate? Is it just the building addition? Is it certain other parts of the roof? What's the design basis?
Yeah, so the basin here, and also within the fast food restaurant area, we're designed according to township standards, so we did revise, with township standard, we revised to account for 20% metal, we're looking at 20% to 40%, so we did revise that, and this area accounts for the... And this area accounts for the increase in some water from the filtration and we're collecting water from the inlet system.
Okay, so we're increasing it by 20%?
No, we're not increasing by 20%, we're going back up.
The ordinance was changed in September.
Right.
Prior to September, the ordinance required you, if you were doing a redevelopment project, to consider 20% of the existing area disturbance that was impervious to the metal.
Right.
The new ordinance requires 40% to consider that in the calculations. When they submitted, the first thing I looked at was that. And that's why they resubmitted it in December, because it's hidden in October. It didn't gesture. So recently, December was changed. There's two underground stormwater beds, a series of inlets and pipes, as well as roof drains, that the stormwater system have been designed in codes which require to reduce the... reduce the volume, leaving the site per requirements and reduce the runoff rate as well.
So what's your total percentage now?
What do you mean by percentage?
Percentage of non-permeas.
If you're asking the question, I think you're asking we are currently going to be at 25% per use.
Per?
Yes.
Per?
Which is increasing from what's currently at the shopping center. So that's across the entire shopping center. Some of the things you'll see in comments received from staff and planning commission was the lack of previous areas in the shopping center. So as you can see here, the green areas here, we first presented this plan, we were presenting raised curb islands with just within redevelopment areas, just within the commercial redevelopment area, and that's where we developed the area. We took that throughout areas of the shopping center to create more per use areas.
Okay, do we have...
Is that a question or was it something different?
No, that's it. But as far as the permeas areas, does that building also have to be considered for the restaurant? Or is it two separate areas that we have to figure out in an engineering standpoint for stormwater?
They balance the whole site.
Okay.
They consider the whole site. Do you have a second, David?
So that means the restaurant will all?
The site discharge point where they balance it to is back here in the rear. This is your balance point here. So they took into account the entire site. They balanced it and met the requirements of the ordinance for the entire site, where areas they're not disturbed, they did not have to account for.
Right.
But they'll touch it. Exactly.
And there is a second underground basin up at the fast food restaurant. Now this is...
Yes. Because it's not valid.
There's another one right here?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have two additional stormwater undergrounds?
That's going to be underground also.
Yes.
So Brian, if you were to give a kind of ballpark percent improvement of stormwater management for this entire site as a result of these two particular new stormwater management practices here, could you estimate what it might be roughly? Is it a 10% improvement to the entire?
Probably 20% to 25%.
20% to 25%?
It was closer, probably 10% if you stayed at the old one. Because you changed yours to 40% of giving.
So 20% to 25% improvement overall of the stormwater management of this 438 system, from these two new filtration banks?
In combination with a new...
Rhythm.
With some new piping, there's also a proposal which they're going through and are working with the DEP for, and conservation is like to provide a new bypass pipe to take the water that's currently pounding in front of the shopping center entrances and put in a new pipe system to get it around the back of the street. It's not developable, it's more of this pounding that they're getting here now. Current places is not volume enough.
Is there any direct pipe that would require a point source discharge into the creek?
No.
As a result of this?
No, they got... They're... They talked to the DEP, got me a letter that they're currently working on getting their waiver from them for that.
Meaning that there's going to be a point source discharge, but they're trying to get a waiver from it? Or there's never that big?
DEP has... DEP has looked at their proposal and has indicated that their proposal qualifies for a waiver for chapter 95. So they do not confirm to do what they're doing.
Do they think that DEP is going to honor that?
Yes. The email came from DEP, it says you qualify for a waiver source.
Oh, okay.
So DEP is going to give you the waiver because... Their initial reach out to DEP says, what you provided seems to be warranted of a waiver. If you apply for a waiver, it should be created.
Okay. So no sampling would be required?
Sampling is only for industrial discharge, not for stormwater.
So we don't have any MPDS there?
No, they do have MPDS. Because they were disturbing what they make, they will have an MPDS for earth disturbance, not for water quality.
So where would the... If what they... For the MPDS coming?
MPDS you're talking about is a water quality, not a construction permit. Theirs is a construction permit.
Gotcha.
We can't receive the MPDS permit?
Correct.
So we do have that in hand at this moment. So do you want to go through? We have made extensive improvements in terms of the overall internal circulation, as well as pedestrian connectivity. So David, can you just run through the access drive coming in and the improvements that are made over to the left lane here, Acme?
Yes. Brian, can you move to seven?
This was really a main comment that we received from planning commission. We spent a lot of time on looking at this.
Yes. As Carrie noted, one of the criteria that we received from our references was to provide safety and pedestrian circulation in the shopping center, especially considering the fast food addition that we're proposing. So as you can see, one of the... Another comment we received also was concerned with cars cutting through the existing layout right here within the middle drive by. I'll say that in the unsignalized intersection. So our team worked with township staff and we are currently proposing to curb this side of the drive out that allow for stop to cut through traffic, which will help improve the car circulation within this area and just to work our way through the plan.
Okay, just one second. I'm sorry, I don't... But it's not just curb. There will be a sidewalk and we are putting fence along that area to protect.
That's driven green.
So...
Yes. Where is this termination? Is that the only place here? What's to the left?
This is the Wells Fargo.
Right, that's Wells Fargo. To the far left is Acme.
This is Acme. This is Wells Fargo. This is the current entrance road. Let's do this, look easier to give them the...
Yeah.
Here's your entrance road. Here's your bank. Here's Acme. Here's the big parking field to put Acme. Currently, it's all open for crossing through here.
So I agree that that's a really great idea. How does that affect overall traffic movement?
Right. So we can go through that. So that is what we've done. Is when you... Do you want to go through here and go with the flow?
Oh, we go with the flow. So essentially, at the unsignalized intersection, you'll enter the shopping center now. Currently, you come in, there's one lane. We're playing two lanes here now. We're increasing that to two lanes?
Like two, one lane?
Two, two... Correct. Two lanes entering the shopping center. So the lane to your right will allow you to come up, come to a stop bar and turn right to exit the fast food restaurant. The left lane... There we go. The left lane will allow you to stop and continue straight. So then, as far as exiting, we are proposing to not improve or not change the left out... Not to change the left out of the unsignalized intersection. So those that would like to exit left will then come down this one lane and can turn right and can exit here to the left. Before you run right, you continue as you would do today. It's down to very technical, right?
Ashley, sorry. Let me stop there. I can see the confusion in the face.
I'm not sure what confusion is that is concerned. Well...
So they're adding a... They're closing off the backside of the parking... The open parking area between the Wells Fargo and the bank. And that's, you have to have a drive out that you can't get through. They're also closing off the intersection right here with the bank where it's wide open. So the bank has to exit in the same thing and then come out. So it's what it's... They're doing, they're proposing to make a more controlled intersection moving here. And currently, it was a free draw because there's too many driveways coming in the same spot.
Right. And I guess my question is, does a more controlled intersection lead to more clustered traffic? And back at that though?
So just to speak to that. Sandy, she's here from McMahon. I'll let her speak to the analysis that was done at this intersection here. But that is something that we took a look at, to Brian's point, as far as improving that intersection here.
Also, one of the comments from planning commission was this area being...
Because that's a... That is a free draw.
Yeah. So by closing this off, the bank has to come out the backside and come into the stop bar here. They've also, you can see all the stop bars where they're proposing to put stop signs on the stop bars. To help with traffic. Right now, it's just a free draw.
And one of the other... Can we go to the fast food restaurant? There's going to be a little circulation. Do you want Sandy to... Did you have anyone to add to that Sandy in that area?
We did look at that. And that's something that your traffic consultant also reviewed. The lesson Sandy Cozo from her family and company. We did count up there at that intersection and then we added the new traffic from both the fast food restaurant and the department store that's coming in onto that area. So we have an idea of how that operates and how it works with, in conjunction with the signal. So it was simulated in that area because it's a little different in terms of everything that comes in is still going to be free flow. Like all movements, the free movements that turned out there at that intersection are stop controlled. So there is some re-timing of the signal itself that's being done to give more time to the egress movements there to help control that queue and to ensure that it doesn't back up in that area.
Is that representative of the traffic that's going to be there? With the grocery store and the...
Yes.
Grocery shop and whatever, and the restaurant?
Yes. All that was overlaid on top of there. So it accounts for all that future traffic that's not out there under current conditions.
I mean, there used to be traffic when there was an active Kmart or whatever else was in there. But it wasn't you or an incrementalist fast food restaurant, correct? But you added that into the...
Right. We also, when we did our study and we did those counts there, because there was nothing up at where the former Kmart was, that was all considered safe and safe. So all the traffic associated with that whole thing, not just the expanded part where the Garden Center is, all that was accounted for as well coming out of there now as well.
Additionally, the planning commission, their recommendation for some... To add some weight there signage for... To let people know about exiting out the back of Turner Lane.
Exit out is going to be a...
That is from the planning, that's a recommendation from the planning commission.
So you're going to be allowed here to exit?
So there's a walk, a lot of people want to go that way depending on Paley Pike.
Yeah.
Because you can drive a pale, Turner Lane, make a left or something like that.
You can go all the way around?
Sorry, which way are you talking about, David?
Can you go to the overall plan a second?
Wait to get to that exit, you could go all the way around the back of that one.
Do I have to go to the back?
No.
No, you don't have to.
It's alerting visitors to the shopping center that there is an alternative. For instance, I used to work at 1055 Main U Drive and I would not, that Turner Lane would be the exit point for me. But just a reminder that there is that exit Turner Lane so that you don't have to go through that. So that will also help improve congestion.
So there'll be signage to... For people back, use the back entrance back here. There's... There is proposal to do some improvements in the back. These three green rectangles you see, that's the three different speed tables. They're proposing.
Yeah, like if I go home from there, I could go that way. So I can get to Turner and push it. Yeah. So it just depends on where you're going.
So I mean, do you anticipate a... That was working, I didn't want to try it.
I know. Just sometimes the batteries get loose.
You get them back more.
I mean, I was talking about a major increase in traffic now leaving at the back and going out onto Turner Lane that way.
That was incorporated into the traffic impact study as well. One of the things that we are doing out there, and it's kind of hard to see on there, is at that access, we are doing restructuring within the existing carway of Turner Lane to provide a left turn ingress into there, at that location.
Is it like a traffic lane on Turner Lane?
No. It does not warrant any type of traffic lane or any type of additional egress things out there.
So are you planning for additional signage right there at Turner Lane? Where you would enter into the parking lot area?
What type of signage?
Indicating that there's a... Would it be a target there?
So that area is actually... That's township-owned land. We have a easement, an access easement over that area back here. And it's something that we have agreed to work with the township in terms of looking at that area. We also have some constraints due to the floodplain developments back there also.
What's with them? It's been discussed, but there's no detail in it yet.
So if you have this particular slide up, what is that additional parking landscape that's been put in there on the bottom left? Or why is that necessary?
That's just part of our... We're just to want to increase the pervis within the shopping center.
There's a parking there, I don't think there is.
There is. There is parking. Yes. It is, right?
So they've added islands to make more channelized drive and not just be open free flow.
I didn't realize it was already existing spaces. I just thought it was part of the access to the back.
Is it grown up or right there? I don't know.
It's just probably very faint. You can probably go over there and just drive over because you think it's the back drive out. It's not exactly parking.
And that was another comment that we did receive is just trying to generally kind of spruce up that area back there to make it more friendly so that people know that they can go back in there. But going back to the overall plan, the one thing I wanted to go with the internal circulation, again Sandy or David chime in here, is in terms of... When we initially submitted the plan for the fast food restaurant, we had kind of two-way access and parking going in front of the fast food restaurant itself. In terms of circulation, it was requested that that be one way. So we did revise that to be one way with angled parking. And so what the thought is here is when they come out of the drive-through area, they would then somewhat be forced to go almost to the right, okay? And go that way. And that's where we'll have the wayfinding signage that they can go back and around. They can also turn left and go out to that access drive that cuts through the middle of the center. But the hope is that it would also encourage people to kind of go to the right and go around the center to go out to Turner.
I know there's a lot of drive-through. I know. Tech press office is going in there. So as far as the overflow of cars, we need to go through the drive-through. Where will they end up?
We go to slide five.
So it's two drive-through with a third bypass link? So it's not three drive-through, it was two with a bypass?
And then in developing this layout, we coordinated with the potential tenant and with Sandy and her team to ensure that we were able to contain the anticipated queue within those two order lines.
That's one of the things that's covered in our traffic impact study. There's a section that talks about that. And we looked at some data from some of the other potential users who might come in here. And right now, the way that it is, there's actually graphic in our study that shows this. You can get like 40-plus cars in the drive-through alone in those two lanes, the whole way from where they have a pickup area all the way back to where you first enter the drive-through lanes.
And is that 40 indicative of...
It's actually more cars than we would actually anticipate for this type of restaurant. Some of the restaurants that were looked at before, we're looking at the numbers, Some of the restaurants that were looked at before, we're looking at the numbers, they don't have all the bells and whistles that the interior is going to have as a new restaurant. So it's going to be more efficient than what you see out on similar restaurants.
So we don't let them detect tenant issue?
No, we've looked at a bunch of different tenants here. So we're looking at worst case and we potentially making sure that it's used on to that. Potentially that's one of the worst case.
But we're working with a tenant, we have a tenant, we're not able to disclose it at this time.
So they can come out, so that's the exit thing of the drive-through?
Correct, so you went into?
And they can either turn left or they can continue out behind and go out that way. And if they turn left, then they have to turn right.
Or left here.
Turn.
Turn right or left.
And that'll be a stop.
Always stop, yes.
Always stop there.
It's a three-way stop intersection, they could turn left and go back out.
Oh, they can turn left and leave.
Right, and that's the thought, so they would turn left and then they would turn right in front of the bank to go out.
Yes, this daylight bike is still being entered. It's actually one of the comments they're working on through with PennDOT. PennDOT wants us to really make it hard to turn left.
And we've worked with them on that in terms of the striding and providing some additional curbing in that area just to prevent that luck out because that's always one of PennDOT's concerns with that type of driveway is the luck out that could potentially occur there.
And you think it's going to work?
Yes, we've tightened that area up so that there's actually curbing and not just striding in that area. I'm not sure what's shown on the plan, it might just be striding that's shown on the plan.
Need to show that.
But that's actually going to be curbing in that area.
It's curved out and extended. They're also widening, going back, adding a full way turn lane all the way down. The way.
Well, one thing that worries me here is that that, that drive aisle that comes across from the right turn only to cross over to the, yeah, right there, that will get a lot of traffic both from, anyone who wants to exit on the Palely Pike and head eastbound is going to want to drive down there whether they're coming from the fast food restaurant or any other parking in this area of the shopping center. Those parking spots look to me like an accident waiting to happen that are right there. Pulling backing out right into the flow of traffic, it would steady stream of traffic.
What happens?
Is there any way we, you can eliminate those particular parking spaces and recreate them to meet the number somewhere else?
I don't think there is. I think that's one of the things that we looked at early on in terms of putting all these landscape divots in here and how to do the control here so that people weren't just driving straight across and then coming down in front of where pedestrians were going to cross to the shopping center. So this was, I think, the best case in terms of providing a little landscape divot that you could do.
Correct, especially with creating, courage, as Kerry noted.
Well, how much, how much space are you losing from the landscape aisle? It doesn't look like that much domain. Is it really an excuse about being able to avoid a hazard of people trying to park in those spots with a lot of traffic flow both ways?
As far as the loss of, as far as the loss of parking within this parking field, approximately thirty-five to forty spaces were lost with creating the circulation, with providing circulation because of this improvement. Whereas with us creating that curve, sorry, with us creating a curve in the aisle that we created this one way, we lost significant spaces within this area here as well as the sufficient amount of divots.
Brian, how are you calculating the parking for this, oh, this use? I know that Rick, sometimes you looked at each tenant or are you looking at it just? How is the parking, is it tenant by tenant?
Correct, we did it tenant by tenant.
So I mean, that number changes depending on if you lose tenants or gain tenants. So I guess what I'm trying to say is it might not be a hard and fast rule. It may be for what you have today, but tenants will leave in six months and then it's a different parking calculation. So I don't think that number is so set in stone. I'll just throw that out there.
Brian, could you go back? I'm sorry.
Give me a second, Sean.
It's currently, as we're showing, I don't know if Brian's going to be telling you the proposed age. My thought is four to five in the parking spaces. There are, that keeps the proposal as updated by.
So did you go through and identify every tenant that you have and then each tenant, say what apartment?
This is the direction we previously received.
To do with that. Well, that's, I know that's what we're trying to do, we just don't know if that makes sense for shopping center.
I mean, is this an actual aerial photo that you've got here? Are those actual vehicles that you can see in those parking spots in that row I was just describing? You can see how a lot of it is used. That row is busy because it's right near the entrance. It allows you the entrance into the act, be pretty well from that row, right? So if this is truly an aerial and those are real vehicles in there, not just a Photoshop or something, that aisle will be busy or want, people will want to park there or think they want to park there until they realize how much traffic is behind them.
Also, one other thing to keep in mind, working with our client, we balance meeting township standards and also meeting tenant standards. Client speaks better than we, but there are some tenants that have been in shopping center for a very long time that hold the key to what's allowed within the serving area for the shopping center. So we had to ensure that in order to make these changes, our client had to go to each tenant and the major tenants get them to sign off on that. And to ensure that there wouldn't be touching parking, that they would accept that.
So they broke their parking out by four types of tenants, four general tenant buckets. There's the four right there you see, eating and drinking, retail sales, bank, and health public retail sales. Those are the four buckets they fell into. So it's not, it's by tenant, but it's more of a group of tenants. So there's not a lot of wiggle room in that chart based upon how our ordinance is set up.
So is fourteen oh nine spaces are required at this time based upon the count of the tenants and the requirements according to our?
Yes.
Fourteen oh nine is what they're proposing, John?
Yeah.
With the fast food and the new additional reading.
So that's what they're proposing, fourteen oh nine?
Yes.
And what are they, what's the requirement?
Fourteen oh nine.
So they're meeting the requirement?
Yes.
Exactly.
Exactly. They're meeting it exactly as in the spaces required by the government.
So if the board were to say that they, even though they like the idea of the additional plan, but they think it's more important to have that aisle not parking, is there ability to change that or no, because of your town, because of your lease of acting? I'd have to, there's several different, it's kind of a puzzle that we've had to put together between like Ellie Fitness and Staples and Acme. They're the biggest ones right now that do have parking ratios. So we have to go back and look and see which one, because some of them have a parking ratio for the entire center and some just Acme like in front of theirs. So Ellie Fitness may have a restriction also that the entire center have a ratio that we need to comply with.
If you go back to Ask for this point, is that, that's hazard?
I mean, I just, I mean, I made the point, it doesn't do, other people see it that way as well that that potentially is a high hazard spot for parking slash traffic flow, at least bend to bend is there.
I mean, that's an existing condition. Have you had any issues or conditions there currently with the way that the cars are parked in that aisle?
No, I mean, what we're trying to do here is make the best improvement we can given a wide range of constraints that we have. Acme controls their parking lot and they have a very short lease. They were one of the first tenants we put in, like you did, tied up with a side lease. And they, they have a ratio for parking, but they also simply control their parking fields. We need to go to them and get their sign off on any changes at all. The biggest concern was the cross traffic and people being able to just go across the field.
Like it is today, right?
Like it is today. And that's why we sacrificed a lot of spaces upfront, working with Brian and the rest of the team and the planning commission to come up with that protected drive aisle and expanding it and putting up the fence and then creating that one-way road on the left-hand side where Brian's got his hand there. So that in combination with putting in the hard islands, which the initial plan of the hard islands wasn't so much green space, that's, that's another benefit that we added on because of comments. But the initial reason to put hard islands is again, you can't cross them as opposed to people getting used to the painted so much. So in early plans, every time we went back to the plan, we added more and more curbing, more and more hard islands and added more directional interior and adding more additional elements to guide traffic because really the way it is now is it's a big open field and the traffic is on that. And so, you know, is it perfect? No, it is not perfect. Is it a hundred percent better than it used to be or the way it currently is? I think so. I think we, we certainly talked about your concern at length in a number of meetings and looked at all the elements that we were trying to put together to increase safety and felt that on balance, we were doing the best job we could while still operating within the constraints because we had some level of control. And, and that's it. I think, you know.
Yeah, we just recognize it's a problem.
Yeah.
Can we go back to the sheet that shows the fast food?
Well, just, and before we leave this, I just wanted to make a point as well, but I mean, this is a really busy shopping center. Even as it exists now, you can be driving down and turn into any one of these lanes and someone's pulling out and I just don't think that that problem's going to stop and I don't think it's necessarily going to be more problematic if that one, you see. You've been wrong.
Can we go to the fast food restaurant? So one thing I noticed in our traffic engineers review of the letter dated July eighteen to the township staff was concerned about truck turning radiuses and how many go-to-clutch flows are parts of the side. It talks about that right turn into the fast food of the main, main road there.
So Sean, I did look at this after you asked me about it today.
Yeah.
At least I, I'll bring this up. So I pulled up the plan that the, that was in question, it's this plan. And I believe it can be fixed, but I'm not going to speak for a date. Two minutes later before you do, where is it?
So to answer your question, we did receive the letter from the truck engineer. And we did take a look at improving the truck circulation and we are prepared to resubmit for that review.
So actually, these questions left you guys?
Yes.
The comment, the comment we driven because the arrows of the truck are facing the wrong direction on this, on this children's truck counter circulation. And it probably was just need to re- broaden the right circulation.
But my, my point was that if you've got even a fire truck or one of these other, whatever the classifications are, SC thirty or whatever on these other traffic sheets, to get, to do that right turn into the fast food area, they've got to swing out a little bit and you can see where they're going across the flow of traffic that's coming out of the fast food, just trying to get back to Palely Pike, right there.
Yes, we did take a look at that and to your point, we did clean up the truck turning movements. One of the things that you can do, the width of that egress drive, one of the things that we should look at as well to ensure that they can make that turn in. And then actually with the truck turning, the egress drive is what we focus on, that's the wider turn.
So will there be a loading zone then?
Yes, yep. There's.
No, actually, it's moved to the left fair.
Over there, in that area?
Yes.
And then over Brian was like, that's the trash.
The trash.
Yeah, that's the trash. We did move the loadings over.
So the revised plan is going to show, Sean, that the trucks can make a movement coming in as they're supposed. This plan shows it coming count, doing the counterflow. They're going to come in, unload or be able to pick up the trash.
Okay. And the zoning hearing board denied a, the size of the, these traffic islands, et cetera, whatever they call. There was a minimum required size for those. Are they all compliant with that now?
Yes, they are.
I can say yes to that one, though.
Let me ask you another question, another subject. What about sidewalks and besides the ones that they proposed here? How about in front of the whole complex along Palely Pike? Is there going to be any improvements down there for sidewalks at all?
Complex along?
In front of the shopping center?
No, we're not proposing those within the right way other than what we're showing as far as turn lanes and maybe improvements for our coordination with the map and the township.
And where the parking will go is that's not, the entrance there is not going to change either, right there?
On the property, right? That's on the property.
Any other questions from the board?
And to your point with regard to the traffic review, we have received several review letters both from the township engineer, PennDOT, traffic consultants. We've gone through all of those review letters and believe that all of the items will be, are will comply. So the plans will be revised to address all of the comments that we've received in our submitted.
So if we approve this tonight, it can be conditional upon them meeting the resolving issues that have been raised by our traffic engineer, correct?
Correct.
I want to ask if there's anyone attending who would like to ask a question. We've had quite a lot of detailed discussion here, so before we move to where the board is, is there anyone attending who would like to ask a question, if any of the presented?
Yes.
There's a high school on either end of that shopping center. When they get out, I was at Bishop Shanahan, across from Bishop Shanahan at the fast food restaurant. And when they got out of school, that restaurant got so flooded with kids. Have you, does that, your study allow for big numbers of kids coming from Henderson and East after school or after an event that traffic doesn't back up onto Palely Pike or?
Well, this is probably not walkable from those two schools. It's quite a distance. You don't have to drive to get here like anyone else.
Oh, yeah.
It's my opinion.
Oh, yeah, they just come all in a herd.
Yeah. Well, it's good for business, I guess, right?
And my only other concern is driving through a shopping center and you try to look to turn and somebody planted a bush there. So I hope the landscaping stays low.
Yes.
Because it's going to be, it's crazy now.
I mean, the landscaping in all these islands, I presume, is very low, right? That's.
Correct.
Yeah, so but around the fast food up here, the Palely Pike, presumably, you may have heard we're trying to look at our ordinance around what kind of landscaping requirements we have and get away from the ever-present grass in our facility into something that's a little bit more native to the area and a little bit more both aesthetically pleasing, doesn't block sidelines and all the rest of it, but is a more considered view as to what a modern landscape should look like. And it would improve the whole feel of the place too, in my opinion. So I don't know whether this is what is proposed here. It looks like, is it just grass or what is proposed?
Low.
They're low lying shrubs and to that point, all of our tenants want visibility as well. So there aren't any high trees that would block any visual in terms of making traffic numerous. So they are all low lying shrubs.
This area right here does have some trees proposed, right here. As far as the township plan, there's a couple around the site, certain areas, and there's a couple in some islands that are far as the wood bits.
Okay.
But those, the plant these Indian islands are going to be low lying shrubs because of safety. They're only in park.
Was any of this run by any of our emergency personnel, whether it be ambulance, fire, police?
Yes.
Fire marshal is there.
Okay.
I know comments have been addressed, correct?
The comments for the site plan have been addressed, yes.
Okay.
Can I get your name for the record, please? For your comment, can I get your name for the record?
Chad Foken.
Can you explain your last name, please?
V O B is in Victor, O K O U N.
Thank you.
Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, I want to expand upon John's point. I think the township did a really good job in getting the Aldi and the sidewalk extended almost up to Turner Lane. And so now what we have out here is an island. Nobody can walk to it because it's not walkable. So I really think that it would behoove the township to have the sidewalks put in. It isn't a lot of sidewalk, but the bank and even over to connect to the sidewalk into the facility itself. This is a perfect opportunity, again, to expand along Palely Pike. It will not come around.
Maybe I'll be able to recall something like that?
It will, it's allowed.
I mean, it's not a trial and error, it's not all of it, right? The board can request an expanded.
Because Steve, you're right. And the one thing that we're trying to do, especially in this really busy area, is connect, because we have so many pedestrians walking and safety really is an issue.
You're also going to need spots for the neighbors across the street to get over there, right?
Oh, yeah.
So this new intersection you're putting in is going to be, people are going to be walking across there to go to new restaurant, to Target, okay, whatever's going on there. So I think you're going to see more pedestrian traffic and over time, this is, you know, an opportunity to get this done.
That's right. Our comprehensive plan says that we, you know, we're striving for, we're striving for having ability to have a walkable route from this part of West Goshen, the shopping center, one end or into the borough. Yeah, I don't think it does.
You guys did a great job with your own.
Whatever way it is, the idea was to have this a more walkable community along here, so.
It'll be a huge.
All right. So is the board, is the board asking the developer here to put in a sidewalk on Palely Pike? Can you go to the overview, Brian, so we can see what section we've been talking about?
Now, the convenience from a safety standpoint, I think it's important to have that sidewalk.
Could it actually connect into the internal sidewalks or not, though? Looks like the bank's a problem.
Here's your palely bike. Part of it.
Oh, I don't think we are capable of designing it tonight, Brian. We can certainly request someone to take a point.
Keep in mind that this is not their property.
We understand that.
But where we can connect, we'd like to.
So I think we're willing to look at it, but there is a lot of concern in terms of utilities and whole relocations and other items within that right of way. So it's hard to say right here and now that, yes, we will put them in. But I think we're certainly open to looking at them to see if we can be put in and within that, within that area, yeah, just with the, the plan doesn't show all the constraints that are currently out there, but we'll certainly look at it if we can.
I know, fine, you could just say slap it on there.
Right.
We have to look at it.
Right.
You can look at it.
One of our other concerns, again, goes to the parking. If we're trying to put a sidewalk somewhere else on this site, then we're going to
somewhere else on this site, then we're going to lose parking spaces somewhere.
We're talking about.
Well, not just along the front, but just to connect in front edge line.
So but within the front, I think, again, it's within the right of way. So we have to look at it with the PennDOT improvements that are currently proposed, the utilities and those areas that are constraints that we currently have. But we'll take a look at it and see if it's possible and then see how and if we can connect it internal without losing spaces.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Anyone else have any other questions to raise? Steve, you have another point?
How about a sidewalk coming into Turner Lane?
At the back?
The back.
Yeah, we don't control that area. And I think there's a lot of flood plain and wetlands that there may be concern back there, but in the first.
All right. How about that?
Not sure where it would.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's a low spot for sure.
Well, the back entrance, there's a neighborhood behind there. I mean, it's, try and connect these neighborhoods together with retailers.
So this area right here is environmentally constrained. And then this is the property one. This piece right here is township property. And that was not part of the proposal.
So it's not even within their property boundary, that's it, right?
Yeah.
When I see that, that. Is that line, the property boundary?
This black line is the property. This line, this is not their property. Their property out there.
Yeah, that kind of junk area, do you, do you not, do you have your bus stop there too?
Any other questions?
Well, one of the comments in the travel note was to provide pedestrian access to the bus stop.
Provide pedestrian access to the bus stop.
Just to hear where we are regarding the bus stop, we've stopped because they're recommending that it be relocated. It will be their ownership numbers in terms of where that one is, where it went on Turner Lane. They don't think they should have two stops that close to one another.
Do they know where they want to relocate it, the bus stop?
It's going to be at the Turner Lane intersection is where they would like it.
Okay. So let's say more so by sidewalks. It would be nice to access pedestrian sidewalks to the bus stop on Paley Pike.
Done.
Steve, you don't need a sidewalk in front of two of the walkways, right?
No, but eventually you may get the state to put a sidewalk in, maybe in order to the township property. I mean, there's, I don't know, we may not be here, but.
I'll be a little, conceptually, that's good. But sometimes you don't want to encourage walking where it's sort of dangerous place to walk anyway. Except if it's done, you would protect it. And then you have to worry about the curvy surface, you have to do some stormwater. But be careful with sidewalks.
Not having many people walking around.
They still walk around at some time.
Yeah.
But like the bicycles.
Okay. So what, in terms of what we're looking at here tonight, it's the frontage of the property on Paley Pike. So we're asking them to take a look at whether a sidewalk could be constructed there that doesn't impact parking or whatever else. Are there any other points to be raised?
I'll just make a comment, just add to the discussion earlier about evening, charging. And we're in support of that. And we found with all of our centers, it makes best sense to work with tenants because most of them have national programs. We work directly with Acme. And we've actually gone through the engineering with them and do approve program with Acme. And so at some point, they will come to you and propose their plan. But we've already signed off on it. And we've also talked to the new, maybe retail tenant about it too, and started discussion and engineering on it, like my folks like in the future and bring that to you and get it resolved.
It's a lot easier to design it in now than it is once you put in all these spots and repaid, you can put in the islands. And then they say, well, could you put this conduit over this part, you know?
The problem is that the types of charges that we would expect two years ago are irrelevant today. And now cars coming out, most of the higher end cars going forward, eight hundred volt systems, they're going to be three phase power. Any conduits that were put in, any charges that were put in twenty four months ago going back are going to be completely obsolete.
Obsolete.
And so.
I mean, the charges are one thing. It's running the conduit and having capacity to pull wire that could put in a different type of charge in the future. Everything's serviced and done and finished. And now you say, I want to bus it all up to run some conduit out there.
That's the problem. We have to look at these sites and, okay, where is the heavy electricity? You might have three sources of electric, but really only one unlimited three phase source. And that might become a long side. And we've dealt with this. And that's why we've kind of taken a position where instead of trying to create, invent the wheel for every site, let's look at the national tenants that have much more to lose and a lot more money putting in to these types of programs. And we're going to have to push their engineering.
That's great.
And also use an opportunity where we're talking locally to tenants like Acme. And then we're talking to the new tenant that's coming in that is a much larger national tenant and saying, well, Acme, wait, what this, what this tenant is doing for engineering, they're really trying to manage. They have much more current information. And you can actually pull Acme along and say, listen, we need to move this thing to a more than higher level so that we don't build in any, you know, any issues in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Use, use creatures.
Well, it's pretty, it's being discussed and hopefully moved forward. I mean, obviously we all want to have a nice vibrant shopping center. And this is, certainly looks like it's headed the right direction. So we're just trying to make it as best as we can.
This is a program we started working on four years ago and it's been a while. And we're really happy that we've gotten to at this point, we're going to go through the tenants, which we'll probably get announced later on.
Okay. So, so Brian, we have a resolution here before the board. It includes several statements related to applicant apply with any outstanding comments, for example, the township fire marshal, from our traffic engineer, et cetera. So the overall usual finish up and address the comments is already built into the resolution.
Yes.
And like you said, the only new addition we have tonight is that we're asking the applicant to study the ability to put in a sidewalk on the Paley Pike frontage. Is there anything else you heard tonight that is not in what was drafted in the resolution?
That's all I heard.
That's a resurrection.
Well, we have, we get to make the motion, we'll have that in.
That's the only thing I heard because I should do it.
Yeah, the conversation you had about the dry ground, what was to the bank, but you heard the.
Yeah, I kind of, I heard a lot of, you know, it's, it's what it is. It's overall, the overall melee that's in there today will be addressed and be better than it is. And that might be one last problem, but it's, we're going to accept it as is for today. Right, board?
Yeah.
Okay. So, boy, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty one, twenty twenty three, with the addition of the applicant needing to review the central installation of sidewalk on the frontage of Paley Pike?
I'll make that motion.
But I, I also think you have to be very clear on what is it that, are you going to evaluate that they come back and just say, we can't do it? We don't have enough space? What is the parameter of whether they can or can't do it?
So, boy, what is your guidance on the requirements that would be make it a go or a no go?
I'd say it depends on the engineering outcome.
Who's engineer?
Their engineer, well, both engineers, Brian, township, and also their engineer coming to a consensus that it's not feasible.
But it's probably, it probably can be done. It's at what cost of how much, how many utility conflicts there are, whether they can get the appropriate permits. I mean, the one thing I know we did in a different township, if you couldn't, are you proposing it within the PennDOT right of way? Is that where we need? And I don't know if there's any room on your private property, but I know in Callan, what they did was because of utility conflicts and grading issues and not owning one little strip, the township asked them if they would consider putting it on their private property, but then granting a public easement to use it. I have no idea if that would work here. I don't know what that land area is encumbered by as far as your leases or what's there. But I just know that's one option that sometimes works. I don't know.
It looks like our right of way goes right up to the access drive. So I don't know that we could, because then we could put a sidewalk within the access drive. So I don't.
So the right of way goes far enough into the site that it would have to stay within the right of way? Okay.
I mean, we have a project at Aldi that was done recently to put a sidewalk in, right? So we must have some experience as to what was required for that. But I mean, obviously we don't know whether there's a lot more, whether there is a lot more utility conflicts at this location than we're there or whatever else.
The difference, I will say, from Aldi is Aldi was taken down and included in our section brought back up. The term of work around existing buildings and existing utilities and everything else that Aldi was.
And existing leases.
And existing leases. So Aldi was, the site was demolished and.
Okay, fair enough. So what do we, where are we with in terms of a criteria or just the ability to make a decision? Is there a dollar threshold that seems reasonable? That you could review and say, yes, I agree. This is, this cost estimate shows that it's this value and that value. Since it's above a threshold, I think it's not feasible.
It'd be arbitrary. You would be, or how about you do it this way? If, if the applicant probably needs to move forward, could you at least grant the resolution or approve the resolution with this condition that they have to come back to you at the next meeting? And then the board makes sort of a subsequent addendum to the order to deal specifically with the issue of sidewalk? Because that way you'll know all the facts. I just feel like if you try to come up with a condition of when they don't have to do it, you're, you're doing that without all the information as is the applicant.
Okay.
And, and I don't know if that helps you as far as moving the project along. I don't know where we are with the NPC clock. I know you've been very patient and everybody's been working together. So I'm not trying to delay it. But at the same time, I don't want anyone to lock themselves into a condition if nobody's happy with.
It would be the next meeting.
Yeah.
September nineteenth.
Just defer completely. I mean, defer the resolution completely until then. I mean, I think you, you're here, the board's pretty satisfied with everything. That's the one issue they want more clarity on.
I mean, I prefer we get a resolution and as you suggested, then make an addendum or an amendment at the next meeting, just so we can report this. If you want more information at the next meeting, we can certainly go get it over the next couple of weeks and come back. But certainly we're willing to.
So you have a problem, sorry to interrupt you. But Brian is away for quite a bit of the next couple of weeks. He is obviously key to being able to say, this is what information we're getting. And so.
May I ask Brian when you're.
I'm on, I'm at a conference the week of the next meeting. That week on the calendar for that next meeting. I'm here this weekend, next week.
I think they were quoting Brian to make that. And we were then, if I had that, he would see.
No, I'd probably be at a meeting, a meeting, when you present.
Can you zoom in?
Because I know we're going to have tons of questions for Brian. And I prefer he be present.
Oh, good.
Or at least you voice me here. You're not present.
Well, I don't know if you're going to have all the answers in two weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, I really don't think you are. They're probably with the PennDOT and, I don't know.
How about the first meeting in October? I mean, if we approve this resolution, we can still go ahead with this. And then we just have that pending, like, for the first week in October.
But if we approve the resolution, it's.
Now, I'm not, I'm not, not at this point. And I want the facts.
Where are we with the NPC clock? So I don't know.
We extended it, I think, to the end of September.
I think they're checking.
I think we gave it until the, because we wanted to cover the second.
So.
Like, what's a, what's a no go for you?
Sidewalk.
I don't even know if I can say without knowing what the constraints are out there. I mean, it's got to be.
Think the worst case scenario.
I mean, we think the sidewalk's a good idea. We would like to put a sidewalk in. And this is an expensive project and it costs money, you know? And we're grownups and we're going to do what we have to do. That being said, we have management, we can only do what we can do. So, I mean, I would say, you know, we will give every effort. And if we can make this work, we can make it work. And we'll work with Brian and try to.
I, I kind of agree. I think we came up with a new request tonight. It wasn't brought up by our planning commission staff. I mean, yeah, we've asked, you know, because the board has the right to maybe consider asking you to put this sidewalk in. It would be good to have it in. I listened to you and I feel I want to believe that you're willing to give it a look and make sure it's, if it's doable, it would be doable. I think the overall project, the resolution to do that, I, I kind of think we can move forward with that tonight. Because, you know, we've got a lot of, you will need to comply with all these other things anyway, which the board is going to see all the details of how they get resolved. Just accepting that you will work effectively to resolve our traffic engineer's concerns and our traffic, our fire marshal's concerns. So we're trusting you to do the right thing with that and make sure that that process continues to work with the back and forth. So I don't see the sidewalk being any really different than that, other than that we, it's probably only tonight.
And it'll cost money.
And it will cost, it will cost more money than maybe estimated today. But again, it's, you know, you have to move more utility poles and everything else. It's an awfully expensive burden that we're going to redevelop, because it's a commitment, so.
So I'm going to ask the two engineers, do you see any reason why PennDOT would not approve an H O P to have a sidewalk there? Like, is there, does that ever happen? Or is it just a cost factor?
PennDOT doesn't really require the sidewalk.
They're not requiring it, prohibit it.
Prohibit? Probably no. As long as it can physically be put into the spot, they're okay with it. They're going to throw the maintenance, though, back onto either the landowner.
Right. We can adjust that through an operation, make an agreement. But it's really just going to come down to dollars and cents then, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Totally relocation and.
See if there's a room, enough rooms where we're not taking down landscaping. Because I brought up here, I brought up, so we can look at it, too quick. This is the current, this is the current area right here. So if they're looking to bring it along, they have all those mature trees right here along this section that, this is the corner they need to get to right here to connect. There's already a ramp across that intersection.
And there's.
Just sidewalk here in front of this bank.
Get you on the bus stop.
And this is, this is Turner Lane intersection. It's already there. We just got to get to that corner. And as Kristen said, they could potentially bring a sidewalk back to here and then they tie it to Turner that way. You know, it's a starting walk. This is just.
Well, that, that achieves the same intent.
Yeah. It keeps you, it gets you in the sidewalk, it gets you across the front.
Gets you into the.
And there is crosswalks at the single line intersection.
Yeah.
Which are one of the objectives tonight to improve later.
But you have to take away the landscaping.
Well, this, yeah, that, this area right here is a, is a grassed island. They might be able to sneak it in.
Oh, I see. So that's actually down here. Okay. I'm at the wrong.
But it's, you've already, you've already got what's that on, on the other side of the road?
Where? Over here?
Yeah, right on the other side from where you were pointing. Is that the bank?
This is the first trust, first, this is the bank.
If you're aware that.
This is Turner. There's a sidewalk along the other side of Paley to Conner Road. Conner Road's all right here. There's a sidewalk on that side. And there is crosswalks with, and they're also part of their H O P, update of signal.
So it's really just this west side of that, the western edge of the park?
There may be a potential, I can't say for sure, potential to connect this, this ADA ramp, the back, and then you're into the, into the system right there.
Yeah, but they're going to do the crosswalk there. They don't know what I do to the left.
They're going to walk through the park.
They're not going to go all the way to the parking lot and come around.
I'm not following too.
Well, the crosswalk is right here. So how are they going to get to the western portion of that?
You take east across it.
Why do they, why do they want to get to, you talk about the eastern portion, this way, right?
The eastern, or even the western, towards Turner.
Well, towards Turner, it's easy. You've got the sidewalk already there in front of the other property.
There's a crosswalk there. Okay. I want to turn left. How am I going to do that?
Not where you are.
She's talking, if you come across here, you get right here.
And I want to know where those trees are. How am I going to get there?
Well, you don't have to go. You've got a sidewalk on the other side of the road, right here, right there. You can walk down that way and then cross over here to Turner.
And once I get moved to Turner, how am I going to get to intersection with a red and maybe, oh, golden ones, with no sidewalk?
Well, you cross over there. You can go, you have to be double back for yourself a little bit and then come on into the complex. Better than nothing to stay today.
So how would the condition be worded? That the applicant shall evaluate whether a sidewalk can be added to the frontage along Paley Pike? And that such determination shall be, you know, presented to the board at a future meeting for final resolution?
Yes.
Does that work?
For final resolution.
As to whether or not a sidewalk is needed?
An amendment to the resolution.
When you say is needed, is needed, that's related.
I'm just thinking.
Oh, I'm trying to come up with a condition in front of public meetings. That doesn't work so well. I need to think about it.
That's, I'm thinking about it. That's all. It's, in terms of coming back at a public meeting and how that affects any plan provisions.
How long has the PennDOT been around, conversation?
Depends.
We just, we just got review comments back from PennDOT. And when you submit to PennDOT, it takes thirty days to get any comments back from them.
But we do, we're just making comments.
We just got comments back on Friday.
Back on Friday.
So if you were to submit comments to PennDOT, let's say tomorrow or in the next week or so.
They wouldn't have it back for your first meeting?
No, but if we went ahead with the resolution. No, but if we went ahead with the resolution on the condition that you would then receive the comments back from Pendot and resubmit them to the board. Does that make sense?
Maybe it's more about the consequences of this thing.
That's my concern, because it's why we're having this question.
How about this, I mean, this is still somewhat vague. Applicant shall attempt to revise the plans to install sidewalk along the Paylee Pike frontage. If determined reasonably feasible by both parties, applicant shall implement the revised plan.
That's fine for me.
Can I read it again?
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I read it fast. Applicant shall attempt to revise the plan, which is a defined term in that resolution, to install a sidewalk along the Paylee Pike frontage of the property. If determined reasonably feasible by both parties, we love the word reasonable as lawyers, right? Um, applicant shall implement the revised plan.
By both parties, is that?
Meaning that there's gonna be a dialogue. There's gonna be a dialogue, there's gonna be some information as to why it is feasible, why it isn't feasible, what Pendot's response is, that kind of thing.
Why am I, we would sidewalks, we wouldn't make it happen. And we would you guys to be on board for that?
Understood. And again, we're willing to look at it. Again, I'm just thinking in terms of timing and if we do need to come back. We've actually have already started making a lot of the revisions to the plans to address all the review letters and ready to resubmit soon, so.
I will tell you, it's not, you're not gonna have, you're satisfied, Brian, between now and two weeks from now with his other workload. No, I know, but I'm just, I don't want you to think that this is gonna put you behind. Because I think even just compliance, the resolution, the way it's worded now, is gonna take some interaction and back and forth. And just his other workload that I'm very aware of, so that's all.
Understood. I think that's fine, I think that's, gives us enough flexibility and allows us to continue to work with the township and.
Okay, so I'm gonna withdraw my previous, you can make the motion.
I did.
You can withdraw your motion?
Yeah, saying I'm gonna withdraw the motion.
Okay, so we draw the motion. Um, you don't need to vote on that, right? Okay, so now we need a new motion that incorporates what Kristen said.
As a further, yeah.
As a further, further.
Adding to the draft's resolution.
As an additional condition to the resolution.
You wouldn't?
So I'm looking for.
Can you definitely, can I make that motion?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna amend the, the motion to discard the first motion and add the new motion that we are going to add, um, language that Kristen had indicated.
So you would adopt Resolution 2120, 2023 as drafted and provide it to the board, but you would add a new condition that says applicant shall attempt to revise the plan to install a sidewalk along the Paylee Pike frontage of the property. If determined reasonably feasible by both parties, applicant shall implement the revised plan.
That's the motion.
Check.
Thank you. Is there any board comments or questions on the motion? Is there any public comments or questions on the motion? All right, we'll take a vote, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes four zero, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, something that New York zoning hearing would kinda let applicants with these type of things make it aware that this is the way the township's headed. So it doesn't get to this spot. And I don't know if they had any discussion before that.
Well, that wouldn't be a zoning hearing or decision, cause that, yeah, that's a planning commission. Because the SADO provision, it's in the SADO of the sidewalk, it's not a zoning requirement. So it ultimately is up to the board to weigh that. Sorry, actually, the way it's worded, it just leads it to the discretion of the board.
So the planning commission needs to.
Planning commission.
Let people know that the township's serious about that.
Does that have to go back to review to the planning commission or anybody else relative to examples?
Does not.
All right, thank you, we've got to clear that agenda item.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number six, which is discussion of possible approval of Resolution Number 222023 granting final land development approval of the preliminary slash final subdivision of land development plan for JAS Real Estate Holdings LLC with construction for building additions of the existing West Chesapeake dealership at 328 West Town Road. Is there anyone here from the?
Yes, the applicant is here and also the engineer from, the online hearing is here.
Well, I know we recently, back in July, granted a couple of waivers for the need for an environmental study and.
Polary final.
And make this polary final. Yes, so Brian, tell us where we are.
So they came before you in July, did a presentation for their waiver. They have gone back to the planning commission to get the length of the issue, which is a new package from the minutes. One of your concerns at the meeting, and I'm getting to the plan, was on the landscaping plan to update the rear of the property. And, wait a second, I gotta do this, let me zoom in on it. Do that. There it is. So here's the landscape plan. One of your comments at that time was to add some additional landscaping along the rear property line. And I know we've been talking with the engineer, they're probably gonna be submitting after, if there's any more additional conditions with the landscaping.
Okay, so they are gonna try to accommodate some additional landscaping on that, whether they're removing the existing parking spots, correct?
So what we did is, uh, we kinda looked at the existing surrounding features there. And so we were kinda looking at it, it's a vehicle storage on the other lot, which wouldn't be all that different from what's gonna be back there already. So we thought it'd be better to add the, the part of the landings against the side properties provided for further screening versus just screening cars from other cars and trucks. Just thought it would be a more value to the area.
As long as you give it some more bullets to how to approve, you know, some natural plantings on that property, if you can do it, great. That was the intention of the request, so. To work, can you show us where they are, it's just on the sides here?
Yeah, so we added a bunch of planting along the side there to kinda beef up. There's already some additional foliage, not as well shown on here, but you can look up, um, street view and, uh, door. Kinda see, it's a little more foliage out there that kinda, where it's beefing up to get a better buffer.
I was looking at the minutes from our previous meeting, so in addition to that comment, there was, Mr. Hellman suggested or asked if the new building additions would be, the roofs would be solar ready in terms of capable of having solar rays put on them? I don't know if that was something you subsequently looked at or not.
Not at our office, no, I mean, it's more of a building architectural feature. But as far as we're aware, it's a great name of a home.
No, it's purely out of. Not a soul.
So Brian, where are they on this?
They, they're adding additional planting along this frontage along the side yard on the east side. This is the rear I'm talking about, you can see the rear of where they're at. They're reducing pretty much the two parking lots almost touched there, increasing their green space between the two parking lots back here.
So all those spaces will go away?
Not all of them, but they're getting short. They're losing part of.
We're lost about half of the projects.
So we're at, I think it was part of previous land development we did a couple of years ago, but we had five feet off the attention of property, just to give it a more distinct buffer between the two properties at that point. Like, as you said, they're basically on top of the job.
And what are the buildings gonna be utilized for?
Some of ours.
Oh, the additional buildings, like storage, warehouse, showroom?
There's no additional building there.
No, it's just the, the main building.
Yeah, they're just expanding on, they're just doing some expansion around, adding pieces on the building.
Oh, existing building, okay.
They're expanding footprint.
Is there gonna be any vehicle charging or any dispensers?
They're well, they, we're not sure where the layouts wanna be. Probably gonna have about four charging stations.
Are you considering any dispensers or underground tanks for gas?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's happened to install with management, Brian? I think, I think you explained it last time, but.
Underground stormwater that.
Yeah.
It's behind the building right here.
Yeah, that's designed for the additional.
Designed for the whole site.
Okay. I don't know, any other questions, is there anyone else on the board, have all questions? Okay, do we have a motion from a board member to approve Resolution 222023?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Any final board comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions on the motion? Are you gonna take a vote, all in favor to say aye? Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes four zero, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Howard was what, two?
He's happy about that, he runs out.
Please run it out before you catch it.
All right. Change to item seven, discussion regarding a proposal from National Gunny for the rehabilitation of Stormsour Pike on Locksley Road. Chris.
Hi, this is Mr. Chairman and our Street Superintendent Mark Buralami is here this evening to fill in any other questions the board may have. Uh, so before the board this evening is a proposal for National Gunny for the rehabilitation of the Stormsour Pike that exists in a storm sewer easement on Locksley Road. The township became aware of a situation involving sinkholes in the property owner's yard. Uh, the situation was investigated and was determined that the corrugated metal pipe was failing. I provided some pictures from the investigation that was undertaken by the Streets Department. Um, so Mark reached, met with National Gunny and obtained a proposal that's been provided to the board. National Gunny is a co-star spender and they've provided two options for consideration at the following prices. So the first option is an invert joint lining rehabilitation from four o'clock to eight o'clock, which would essentially be the bottom of the pipe at a price of $100,813. And then second is a full circumference rehabilitation of $180,425. Uh, the existing pipe is 48 inches in diameter, uh, which we believe has resulted in the increased price. Uh, just in reviewing the proposal, which has been reviewed by both myself, Mark and Brian, um, we all agree that if the funds are available, the best course of action would be to perform the full circumference rehabilitation. And then in reviewing the budget, funds would be available in capital reserve fund for this project. Uh, there is a line item that for stormwater projects that allocates $500 and $537,370. And today roughly $25,000 has been spent. Uh, 74% of that is based on the Malax Street Culver project. But since that's being viewed as a lining project and is speaking with Mark, we think the price of that project is gonna be significantly reduced. Um, so if we're, does wanna proceed forward with this, we can utilize the funds that were allocated in that line item.
Listed a line project to, though, right?
Correct.
$180,000, so what, what do we think we're gonna say potentially on the Malax Street project?
I think, Mark, I think you said the estimate you were thinking was between 25 and 50 for Malax Street. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this pipe is significantly larger than Malax Street, is that correct?
Malax, I think it's 24 to 30 inches, and this is 40.
Then how, what's the run at Malax, how many feet is it?
I think they had 50.
So this is 285, right, this is much longer.
What's that?
This is 285.
Yeah, so it's a lot longer, right? And 48 inches is very large for a city.
And Mark, why are you, why are you suggesting the invert, inverted joint rehab versus the full circumference? Why you, or the opposite, why you, what?
Well, we just do either, but I think once you're in there, you might as well do the whole pipe. The holes are in the bottom, so that's why you have to do that. But once we're in there doing the work, we're learning. I think it's best just to do the whole pipe.
And truthfully, if we go in and do that, I don't know what Mark's saying and speaking with Brian, if we go in and do the whole pipe now, it'll last long past any of us are here.
They're saying minimum 50 to 75 years.
What's the product, concrete product?
Basically.
Charlie Creek.
It's like what they make, build a pool on. It's similar to what they do when you wanna pull, concrete pool.
It kinda connects to the wall.
Is it like a gunny material?
Yeah.
Mark, well, how do we come up with what section needed this work to be done? I mean, obviously roads where you fixed the collapsed line of the street a couple of years ago.
Right here, yeah.
So it's like, are we just chasing, this surround's gonna be somewhere else now?
Kinda go, or, or south, I guess. So that's the pipe we fixed in round, with black top, dark here. And it takes a 90.
Right there.
Follows a dry way down to a storm handle, probably 200 feet, then crosses Sussex into the retention pond over here. So we'll, we'll be doing the whole thing.
Whole thing for the retention pond, through that whole property back to where you finished, you did the work.
Correct.
What was the section where the, the sinkholes are, do they have to remove that section and replace that part?
No, they put in a wire mesh.
Oh, okay.
They put screws all in, they, they wire mesh the entire pipe.
Gotcha.
And the hand trunks.
Do they have backfill in around the pipe?
We'll do the backfill with the holes.
Now, was this section a pipe scope, you know, with the, the rotor or the drum going through there?
We tried to do that, but the holes were so bad that we couldn't. But the vice president actually walked down it and videotaped it and then showed it to us.
Yeah, the guy from National Gunny, he came out, he crawled down the pipe, took pictures with his phone.
Oh, right.
Yeah, he crawled down the pipe.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is, won't be any other surprises, once they start doing this, will there?
There shouldn't be.
Yeah, the, the product that we're proposing, the gunny, they can rebuild the pipe, because they use the mesh to create the pipe when we fill it. Is that gonna be the capes to hold the concrete?
So this technique's probably gonna be one we potentially use on other areas of CMP piping problems that we might encounter.
If it's large.
If it's large enough. So there's a limit, you gotta have, what's it, 36 and higher or 48?
I think it's 30 and higher, like it's 24 or 18, they can get it.
This is similar to the other lining project we did last year.
No, Legion was, was a plastic liner that they, they put in there almost like, I kinda call it snake skin. And they blow it up and cures and plagues. And then Amelia Project is like a snap type, they put the rotor, they feed it, they feed it, they snap it together. And that's probably all the two orange. So there's three techniques right now.
It depends on the condition of the existing pipe, like what kind of liner it is. And then balloon, the, the PVC that I talked about, they heat it, pull it in, like, a balloon, they blow it up. And it cures and plagues, but you can't have holes because it leaves out the holes in the whole pipe. So this pipe is too far going for that.
I think it's a good idea to just do it all.
Is this the same outfit that's gonna be doing the, the one on Malax Street?
Yes.
Can we get any questions?
No.
All right, well, I will make a motion to.
There's one thing real quick.
Yeah.
Um, so we do have a stormwater easement that Harrison and our codes department was able to locate. It's documented on the original subdivision plan that was on there. But in speaking with Kristen, she thinks we should get like an actual, like written easement that's recorded against the property, not just what's on a, not just what's on the land development plan. This wouldn't prevent us from, the board from authorizing this work and proceeding forward. And in speaking with Mark, they wouldn't even be ready to do this work until October and November. So we can make, we can make sure we have the right easement sort of buttoned up instead of just going off of what's on the report when it develops.
I mean, you can ask, you can make it, but.
It's not conditional upon getting an easement.
No, I mean, so we're relying upon, known on the plan, nobody agreed. Doesn't say anything about who's responsible for it, I mean, it's just, it's the way things were done. So if we're spending the money to do this, if we can, again, I don't know if Kirk and I would agree with it, but it would be, it would be a nice thing to have a recorded easement that's clearly in somebody's chain title that identifies the township, this archive, who's responsible for maintaining it, et cetera. That's a better scenario, but it doesn't mean can't, if they say no, it's because we haven't given it here.
And speaking with, Mark and I talked about this this morning, and we don't think there's gonna be an issue with getting easement for the property and or he's been good to work with as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
Just curious, Mark, when did you guys become aware of this?
This was probably a month and a half ago.
You brought, did the property owner bring it to the township board?
Is there a safety concern?
Yes, we have barrels and caution tape with all the.
Okay, so if you don't get to it until October, I mean, from now until then.
We'll keep watching, we'll visit, but he's aware of it, he's aware of it.
Is it all in his yard, the sinkholes, or is there any bits over there?
Right there, and he has a large, large garden on the top of his side of the pipe. So if he dug by hand, it should be there, it could be out of his way. But if he dug by hand, it would be, you know, a lot of work.
And it's deep pipe, how big?
Six feet? How deep, six feet?
Nine feet. Nine feet, so he could dig it, but I think because of all the. So we could dig it, but I think because of all the vegetation, I think the gunny's a bit of a problem.
The other issue we had was we can't get four-inch pipe, was it?
Six months of plastic, probably not.
Six months to get pipe to be placed in a plastic pipe?
Last time I did that problem, I remember the aluminum, remember, was it?
Yep.
That was.
That job.
His job.
What about the safety concerns, somebody walking into it or dogs or animals?
Well, I don't know if you have a picture with the barrels and the tape?
No, I don't.
There are barrels, we get a tape over it.
That's what I'm asking, is there some way that they could secure it? So nobody fall in there?
You put plywood over it.
Something on there.
I don't want to feel like dirt, I don't want to mess up. I don't want to disturb it. But we do have the caution, we don't caution tape around the doors.
Well, maybe it's because of the property owner, any guess, it's right, it's not in a publicly accessible.
Oh, no, it's spot, it's, it's on his property.
It's back here, it's inward.
You really can't walk from that street across there, it's got a dam, it's got its garden. It's a jungle.
Mark, can you reach out to the property owner tomorrow and just verify that they'll sign the easement document?
Okay, well, that's not conditional on our approval of the project, right, so?
I know, it's true.
Okay, so I was, I, I will make the motion to accept the proposal for National Gunny for rehabilitation of the storm sewer pipe on this particular property for the full circumference rehabilitation, the amount of one hundred eighty thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. Actually, second, is there any further comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions? Steve?
Is this one of the ones that was on the list from this summer, or is this crap?
I don't believe it was on the list, but it was not.
It was not.
No, this was, this was kind of crap though.
It's not to get shorter, Steve, it's only to get longer.
I mean, the fortunate, the fortunate thing. The fortunate thing is Public Works Department did that one section of Locksley, we're going to finish this other section along here and connect it to the existing basin, so this will address that whole section of pipe.
I think Sussex was on the list, but further up.
They were going to help from the other way now, right? From, not this way, but further upstream on Sussex, wherever it is.
Minor issues we found through there.
Wow, you had another section on this?
Oh, we did, it was either Danbury or Panham, we fixed about ninety feet, two blocks away from the town.
Okay, one's one problem at a time, so we have a, we have a motion made, so any other public comment? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Thanks, Mark, appreciate your help. Okay, next is agenda item number eight, discussion and possible issuance of a notice of intent to award pursuant to chapter sixty-five of the West Goshen Township Code ordinances for the infrastructure expansion project for additional electric vehicle charging stations at the township. Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening are the bid results for the project to expand the infrastructure necessary to install additional electric vehicle charging stations at the township complex. Mandatory pre-bid was held on August twenty-second, and the bids were opened via the Penn Bid system on August twenty-ninth. I provided the bid tabulations from Chris Peterson and Carol Engineering. For this project, the township received ten bids, and the bids ranged from one hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to three hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the cost estimate that was provided previously was two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, two hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. The apparent low bidder is Hobbs and Company, Inc. from New Quinn, PA. So pursuant to chapter sixty-five of the Township's code ordinances, which is Township's responsible contractor requirements, the township will need to issue a notice of intent to award. What this will do is initiate the review process outlined in the ordinance to ensure that the low bidder meets the requirements outlined in the ordinance. And pursuant to section sixty-five four, the notice of intent to award is conditioned on the issuance of a written contract of responsibility and determination. So once the determination is completed by Carol Engineering, the contract will come back before the board for final awarding. And in speaking with Chris, he's hoping to complete this for September nineteenth, you know?
The review compliance with the contract?
Yes. I'll, I'll note that seven of the ten bids were below the estimate that we received. That's not a knock on Chris or Kirsten or the work that they did. I was just, it was, I was only surprised with the bid results that came in.
The bid range is staying really, one hundred and fifty-two to a high of three fifty-five, perhaps, or a factor too.
But the, if you look on the low end side, half of them are relatively comparable to each other.
Does Keystone or the township have any experience of working with Hobbs and Company?
I did, I don't, we do not have any experience with them that I'm aware of. Did ask Chris about that, he did talk around his office, and he didn't have any experience. Kirsten, do you have any experience with them?
I've talked around my office as well, I'm aware of this.
And he gave a list of who they did subcontractors for, right?
Brian and I took a look at their website, and it's pretty extensive with the work that they've completed.
So I was on their website too, there's this thing called ELEC. If you scroll down. And I'm unsure where it is.
I have a brief comment to add, if interested. I, I do have a brief comment. And it's just regarding the, the reason that Keystone and Carol, in my opinion, has not worked with them before, is because this is not an area of expertise that we are typically involved in. We work for municipal water and wastewater on a typical basis for Keystone, and that is also true of Carol particularly. So it's not surprising to me that a more commercial type of contractor is, is unheard of on our end.
Here's some of the, here's some of the projects they went to, why did they, did President's Walk Fountain?
Don't hurry up.
CTPI is down, that's it. That's the one we were.
I mean, relative to some of these projects, I would imagine our project's fairly small.
Agreed.
Really?
Agreed.
Okay. What other questions do we have about the, the proposal or the ability to issue a notice of intent to award? Any other questions from the board? I mean, it's obviously self-certified so far on the contract responsibility certification form, so that's what Carol, will you assist with that?
I will assist with that, as Chris Newton did, but it's in Chris's court.
Okay, so he will, like you said, in two weeks bring back the review of this?
That's what, that's what he's hoping for, it may, it may take longer, but he's hoping for the September nineteenth, you know?
Any other questions from the board? Okay, then, I will make the motion to issue a notice of intent to award pursuant to the chapter sixty, sixty-five of the West Goshen Township Code ordinances for the infrastructure expansion project to Hobbs and Company for the amount of, whatever it is.
One fifty-two, six sixty-five.
One fifty-two, six sixty-five. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions?
I have two questions.
Sure, Dave.
Please, first question is, please explain what you mean by infrastructure, what, what exactly is going to be installed, and how many of these charging stations be anticipated here? And then, was it, was this in the budget for this year, or was this plan being planned for next year's budget?
This was in the budget for this year, I think Chris mentioned in the, his initial introduction that we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for the project. That did include obviously covering some of the Carol Engineering Keystone design costs as well, so it's within the budget that we can plan for this project for this year. First question, I don't have the design in front of me, maybe Chris, if you could explain again, it's about running conduit and cable installed, at least initially a couple of level-two electric vehicle charging locations, so we can gradually start to convert our fleet over to EVs, particularly on the admin side. So a lot of these locations are close to the admin building, they're not really, there's one or two over near the police building.
Will this, will this involve increasing the, the electric service to the complex?
No, the analysis that Keystone did, Kirsten did, was to show that our current panels and cable supporting the demand, the charge is going to be up to, I forget, it's like twenty-two spaces could be actually allocated and not over the current system, correct?
That's correct. The, on the other side, I'd add is that we are planning on two pedestal mount chargers, they will be dual mount chargers, so that's a total of technically four chargers over at the police building, and then a wall mount charger in the maintenance building. And that will be a dual charger as well. So those are planned to be installed under this project, and the rest will just be installation of conduit with upholstery, so no wire installed at this time, and the wire will be installed in the future when the chargers get installed.
Okay, well, these chargers, is there some built-in way so they can be not obsolete in the future?
That's really a great question. So, so is there level-two chargers?
Like a guarantee or something?
Well, okay, I mean, the, the way we evaluate how these vehicles are used and how they're parked, and it's quite feasible to not be obsolete, we guess maybe a better super-duper charger or whatever else comes out that you use somewhere else, but for this township and using the vehicles that we will have, these charging stations require?
Exactly, because they're level-two chargers and they're not doing direct DC charging, was what the manager from Kia was alluding to when he was talking about obsolescence. Level-two is basically, think of it like residential at your home, you could use two forty-volt single-phase, in our case, we're using two oh-eight volt single-phase, and so it just plugs into the charge, or into the car, whatever adapter that comes with the car. So Tesla often has adapters, so you can connect to different charging stations. And it will inject AC current, which is like converted in the car. So by doing it that way, there really is no obsolescence that we're talking about here as far as the charger is.
Is it also safer?
Yeah, exactly. DC can, DC can be very dangerous, as we know from Edison and his research, so, and the electric tank, but yeah, I, I agree, AC is safer. It's not as efficient to have to do the AC to DC conversion, definitely have some losses in there, which it comes out in the wash with the time. So we are anticipating about, I, I forget exactly the time, but I believe it's within an eight to ten hour window for full charging from that. So the intention is to kind of charge the vehicles overnight or when you're on, out.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, are we ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, discussion regarding a professional services proposal for the installation of a solar energy array on the Public Works Department facility, building D, at the West Goshen Township Municipal Complex. Chris?
Hi, this is Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is a proposal for professional services for the installation of a solar energy array on the Public Works Department facility. This was previously discussed at the July sixth meeting of the board, where proposals were requested from both Carol Engineering and HRG. Brian and I did meet with HRG to discuss this project, and after this meeting, they contacted the township and informed me that they would not be submitting proposals, they did not believe the scope of work was appropriate for their firm, but they did appreciate the opportunity to be considered. Additionally, speaking with Chris Peterson, Carol Engineering, he believes the most efficient course of action for the township would be to work directly with Keystone Engineering Group with work that may be necessary, Carol Engineering being handled on a time and material basis under our general services contract with them. Please, I provided a proposal for Keystone for consideration totaling sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, which is divided between twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars for the designing bid phase and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the construction phase. In addition to that, I did ask Chris to outline that the services that would be provided from Carol Engineering, and they provided some estimated costs, which are a total of, which is a total of four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, which is thirty-two hours. And a good, a good portion of that is the review of the submitted structural mount for the solar rank conduit penetrations, review of the responsible contractor ordinance and doing the necessary bidding documents, like the pre-bid meeting and the front-end documents. So based on these costs, the total estimate is seventy-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
So just summarizing this project, what we were going to do was scope a project at a higher level that we could put out a bid for a design and build, turn key approach.
Correct.
This really is to provide oversight services for that overall process, so the creation of a high-level scope, executing a bid process, review of the low bidders, whether it's our CEO, et cetera, and then follow the project through the design and build phase, making sure it's consistent with the intention of what we want from the installation in terms of its design, its output, and all the other parameters that could be afforded to us.
That is correct, and I think there would be some minor design stuff from Kristin on the front end.
Yeah, I do have.
She outlined that.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay, sure.
So, the proposal that you have before you was not revised to be addressed to West Goshen at this time yet. There are some additional things that would change, and one would be, like you said, on the front end for Keystone to do that work instead of Carol Engineering. And then also the advertisement and solicitation on headbid, so there's a little bit more cost for Keystone as opposed to Carol Engineering as far as the bidding portion is concerned. And then the two other additional, actually one other additional that is, was not initially included in Keystone's scope, would then need to do the admin services for a notice of intent to award, letter of notification and notice of award. So there is some scope that is missing from my current proposal that is addressed to Carol Engineering right now. I need to revise the proposal to you guys, but I wanted to make sure that you guys understood, you know, what Keystone is off, right, that you wanted to go down this path before going through that, that detail of changing that. So that's my preliminary comments.
Good question on that. So Kirsten, are you saying that, obviously when I read, you know, the proposal here, it's as a kind of, on behalf of Carol that will lead on it now, or is it, you're talking about a real direct contract with Keystone to do the work? Will some of the Carol tasks that are outlined, Chris outlined, will they reduce if you're now managing the authorization to issue a notice of award, et cetera? Is a bit of a swap here, or is it, what, what's increasing versus the cost you have now?
That's a good question. So Chris did not go through the exercise of detailing how the prices of the items that I listed, because he was under the impression, okay, we'll shift gears and have Keystone work direct for the township. So these are just outliers that are not covered under either cost currently. So they could potentially be reduced. They, I, I don't believe they'll be reduced, I think they're only paying additionally the cost. I think is what I'm getting at here.
Have you estimated those additional costs at this point on?
At this point, I have not, preliminarily speaking. I would expect an additional five thousand dollars on the design portion, and then an additional probably twenty-five hundred on the construction portion.
I think I would like, it's my, just my opinion, but I would like to get that fixed, so that you update the proposal, so it's a direct relationship working with the township, get that sorted out and included in there, and hopefully be done in two weeks, and then in two weeks, we can just come back with it as intended, send a, you know, document here just to, for the board to review it, to agree with that point.
That makes sense.
Just trying to figure out what might change, make, maybe the motion tonight is a little difficult complex, is that okay?
Agreed, yes, that's totally acceptable, you know, I'll get back with you before two weeks.
Okay. Now, can we ask the board?
No, I know Chris had initial questions for me on Keystone capability, and honestly, that's probably what I expected to discuss tonight, which was why I was not prepared with the number, and I apologize for that. But I just want to speak to the matter that Keystone has worked directly for township before, and has handled things on pending, and has done all of the front end and. before and has handled things on pending and has done all of the front end and forward and admin type of stuff that we're talking about today. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, I'm confident that sounded like a good bit there. Can we just talk about, I mean, as you mentioned earlier, your main experience is in that whole water, wastewater, traditional municipal projects. You know, we're going in a little different direction here where you helped us design the infrastructure for the EVs and now we're getting to the solar array where we're working to these specialist design, design builder, solar companies that are going to come in and hopefully have several bids, get a nice good price for it and all the rest of it. Do you have the skill sets to, A, understand the proposals and recommend any issues for, identifying issues for the board and then be able to follow that project through its full, you know, design, build, completion? Do you have any concern or capabilities about the skill set you have to do that?
That is a great question and something I ask myself as I do, I myself do not have experience with solar. So I asked around our office and we have a lead engineer, he is a senior level engineer who came from the commercial industry and used to work in schools and had a number of solar projects that were handled this way. He told me that this is probably the most common way to handle a solar project where you do the design build instead of design bid build. So he's very familiar with that and he'll be supporting me on the technical level on this job. And then within speaking with one of our partners, Jay Penetti, I'll just go in despite him not being here, but anything with a wire is something that Keystone is capable of handling and I tend to agree with that. So if it has a wire, we can figure out what the power demand is and we can do our calculations to make sure that all of the numbers line up and make sense. So I, I do feel that we are competent and I do feel confident that we will do the job well. Where I was initially struggling with this is just, like you said, understanding the whole piece that comes into play in the solar system. And in talking with Curtis, who is the senior engineer I mentioned, he understands how to tie the system into the grid and that was my missing link. So I feel confident that we have the capability. But that is also why I am recommending some schematic level design at the beginning stage of this project and not just going out with specifications to the contractor. I want to make sure that we establish a footprint and we establish a connection point and get that net metering tied in called out so that it's specifically clear to the contractor.
Okay. So anyone else have questions from the board? Kirsten, do you want to, in terms of questions to leave?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, but because I maybe missed some meetings, is the board considering now mostly doing a design build as opposed to leasing a system? Is that where we're headed?
Yeah, we're headed towards the design build. We own it from day one because of the fact that the IRA allows for 30% of the cost to be reimbursed versus previously before the IRA came into law, we were eligible for the tax credits, you know, the rebates because of township is a non-taxpaying entity and therefore these other arrangements leasing brings for more favorable to lower the overall cost to an entity like township. That's changed now and this is the direction we believe is most advantageous and one previous meeting we looked at the analysis that they provided by, I think the company, Solar Reitt. And then it showed the, you know, the overall approach of if you pay a fund, you know, you start accumulating benefits early.
They're busy at one point. I'm playing to my point.
Yep.
Good question. What is IRA?
It's essentially the Inflation Reduction Act, but it's solely, it's the act that has fully available grants and incentives for renewable energy installations, et cetera.
I have three, three questions. You want to put these panels on the D building, we talked about this in 2012, and they decided to not go that way because I think of the cost, but the electricity, these things, do you just want to power that building with these things or do you want to have that electricity come over to the other building?
I'll let Kirsten tell that one.
The, the correct answer is neither. The intent is to net meter, so we'll be tied in to backfeed into the utility. So there will be a contract drawn up between the township and PICO to allow the, essentially the meter to spin backwards so that you can put out onto the grid while you're in a time of generating. So the other option would be if you wanted to just consume this at the building would be to add batteries, which would add a lot, a higher cost to the project plus a huge footprint.
So what's the push for net meter?
Net meter.
Is that what you want to do, the net meter?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so that way you're going to have these things out there and you're not, we're not going to use that electricity.
So the way that this works is it ties in as a parallel connection. So essentially, if you think of the wire coming in from the power company, you're tapping onto that wire, connecting on prior to the meter and then you're feeding in. So, or I'm sorry, just upstream of the meter, but prior to your service entrance. So prior to your first breaker. And then you're feeding in, you can consume it, but most oftentimes it's going to be going out onto the grid and you get it back as a credit.
So the intent is to save money doing this way?
Yeah.
Make money and also make money.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what's this, the second question is what's this going to cost? How long are we going to be in that positive?
So Doug, as I, rather than try to answer all that questions, I, we have the presentation from, sorry, Solar Renewal, it, it was in a previous board meeting, probably one you missed, and there's a whole presentation that Chris put in the agenda materials around the upfront cost, the build of it and how you save money and all the different components of this. It's quite complicated, but there's a, there's a fairly extensive spreadsheet that shows the analysis side. This is a 30-year project and it broke it out where after, you know, 50, 20 years, you have to replace the inverters and plug inside. So it, it had all these mapped out as a, as a way to show the overall cost benefit analysis that was done.
And it was well done and you can actually understand it, so.
Can I actually?
Go back to that.
So is it like five or 10 years or?
The buyback, I think, was 10 years.
Yeah, 10.
Yeah, return on investment, I think, was about 10 years.
It's worth taking a look at.
Well, you got the upfront capital between how it hands, without borrowing money to do it. And then, you know, so you're saving money from day one because you're now not consuming as much power on the complex. Then over 10 years, you can be killed with the cost of the capital and more.
Yeah. And like was already previously mentioned, the IRA act really changed the dynamic here. It made it much more of an interest for us to buy ourselves from the get-go rather than have somebody come and pay all the upfront costs, but then they would realize all the credits.
And the IRA allows for, I think it's a 30% rebate on the cost of construction. So we have a $750,000 project, that's $225,000 just sort of a rebate.
We think the bid will be in this three quarters to a billion range and that the credit will get back from the federal government will be about $225,000. So the net cost in our budget, well, we have to budget for the full amount because we have, we don't want the credit comps, but we're going to get, we have net around $500,000 based on what we sold from this one company and we got, so we got the bid, it's to a range of.
So you said net $500,000?
Net five, 525 was it?
Over many years or just?
That's what's going to cost is to pay to have the design build done in 2024. $500,000, yes.
I have mine for 13 years now. It took about 28, 9 years to pay it off. And after eight, nine years, it was basically around probably. Because what you're doing is you're selling the energy, you're running a generating station, you're selling that energy back to PICO. PICO's giving you a credit every month on your electric bill. And then there's also S-Rex that are involved, which aren't much, but.
Yeah, I have one more question, sorry. And then the maintenance, are we going to do our own maintenance on that one system?
Maintenance is pretty, hopefully not existent as long as you don't get coated in snow or dirt or washed off. It's, you know, you have to inspect it annually and make sure if it's good. The biggest problem is these inverters potentially fail after around 15 to 20 years, it's typical line. I need to be designed, put it in an accessible place so it's easy to swap it out when it gets blown.
Okay, so we'll have to build access now, the routes up to these, to get up there, to inspect them and check for evas and all that. And I guess if you figure out the safety for fire, fire access.
Yeah, that would be hard.
We discussed at the plan meetings, the National Electrical Code leaves out all these minimum requirements.
And the access was already put in because I believe in 2012, March is left in 2012, when that building was constructed, it was constructed with the intent of building this kind of project. So the fire, the fire access already exists to the best of my knowledge and structural integrity based on the analysis that was done can support a project of this magnitude.
Okay.
It's a good project, it really is. Any other questions?
So Mr. Chairman, what I heard was Kirsten's going to update her proposal, adding these additional costs. I'll have Chris kind of adjust his costs accordingly if necessary and we'll come back before the board September meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I won't be available for the September, I apologize and thanks for that.
I think we've asked all the kind of technical slash.
Okay, good.
Business questions are of you, unless the board feels otherwise, if we were able to address this without Kirsten being present. If we, if we have a question we're not comfortable proving it, we'll just have to defer it again, but we'll assume that what you provide is what you've got to know is to make a decision next meeting.
Would the board like Chris here and Kirsten's absence and they can coordinate in advance?
If Chris is able to speak, what piece, you know, these questions, I'm not sure you put it on the spot, but I'm comfortable with having, you know, if we've got other questions, we should be asking that number of you tonight because it's quite clear, you know, we know what we can change in terms of the proposals, the direct relationship. All the terms of conditions, I'll make sure Chris is comfortable with them.
And there's no technical change.
There's no technical change. You told us you want to do the schematics, you just go to a date and price thing.
And you said you'd get it to us for, yes, yes, I leave on the 13th of September, so I'll get this to you this week.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? I'll get it from Kirsten, I'll circulate it in advance. The board can review it if you have any questions. I've piled those, get them to Kirsten in advance in the 19 to get the questions answered.
That's good.
Advance it by the 12, she needs to be answered.
Well, yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it circulated and we'll get it taken there.
You have time, I am going away, but I will be available.
I need to go away.
I know, but it's going to be a month, so I gotta, I gotta say.
It's a long time.
Our big trip, guys. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. We move on to agenda item number 10, discussion of possible approval of an update to the TE160 form for the intersection of Paley Pike and North Concord Road. And Chris, you're the lead on this one.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is consideration to approve an updated TE160 form for the signalized intersection at Paley Pike and North Concord Road, which was discussed earlier this evening. This update is solely for the style of crosswalk at the intersection and it will be modified from the standard crosswalk that I provided in memo to the board to the continental style design, which is also known as like the Keen and O'Keefe style design. So, so the improvements, Zebra?
Zebra, yes. It's called in the UK. Zebra crossing.
So the improvements completed by Pendot is part of their Paley Pike paving project and is at no cost to the township. Actually, I was there the other day and they've already installed the striping. Brian, Mark and I all believe that this would be an improvement to the intersection as it would provide better visibility to the crossing area. And it would also, I believe, Brian, correct if I'm wrong, but it will also match the design at the intersection of Turner and Paley Pike.
Yes. There's Turner, there's Concord, it has the old, old style. So I had those drawings, it's new and dated.
So now it's been paved and they actually did do add more, but again, no cost to us. Just need to update the form for the signal permit.
And the permit, the permit drawings, Pendot's permit drawings also should crosswalk, that's why they're shown here in red because that's the update that would be done. And since the plan was single in your name, you have to sign the TE160.
And we had, we did coordinate this with the applicant shopping center earlier this evening and they did submit an updated highway occupancy permit to reflect this change as part of their review with Pendot.
What's the color of the seeds?
They're white.
Oh, white.
Just right on this plane, as you can see.
Yeah, I just wanted.
They're going to look just like.
It's going to look just like a terminal. Actually, it's there already if you want to drive, you have to go to the AC and drive down.
Yeah, so this is Turner's, this is what it looks like a terminal lane now.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
It's going to look like that here where you see it's just a straight lines.
Yeah.
We're going to replace them with that style crosswalk.
Okay.
It's much more visible as you're driving, as you're driving.
Okay, I will make the motion to update our TE160 form for the intersection at Paley Pike and North Concord Road to use the continental design of crossing.
No, sir.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? The motion passes pause zero. Agenda item number 11, discussion of possible approval of resolution number 23, 2023 approving the 2024 minimum municipal obligations for the West Ocean Township Pension Plan. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is resolution number 23-2023. This resolution would establish the 2024 financial requirements and minimum annual obligation for the township's three pension funds. The total MMO across the township's pension plans for 2024 is $1,147,032, which is comparable to the MMO for 2023. In terms of the state aid that the township receives, this would cover approximately 57% of the MMO cost based on the amount received in 2023.
So typically, my understanding is we use the actuarial evaluation that was done for two years, right?
That's correct.
And, but because of the situation that the market was down in 2022 as we found in 2023, we're going to extend the use of the 20, 20 about actuarial evaluation.
2021, we also haven't received the 2023 actuarial evaluation yet and we did clear this with our actuary to proceed forward in this manner.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
This isn't directly related to this, but just a question, what's the percentage of funding for the three pensions? You have to know all the names.
I don't know the percentage breakdown off the top of my head for the three different pension funds, but the overall, the overall percentage to cover the MMO, if you're, we're using our 2022 state aid allocations, it will cover roughly 50, 57% across all three funds.
So the MMO will cover 57% of the liability?
No, no, the, the state aid received will cover 50% of the MMO, of the obligation, of the obligation.
Our pension plans, I think it already worked in 22, they were a little 100% funded, but the, obviously the markets moved this year, it's probably the mid to high 90% funded at this point, but it changes from year to year.
Nothing's in danger of immediately reconciled.
Not at all.
So for the 2025 MMO, we're going to use evaluation as all when?
2023, January 1, 2023.
Yeah. Which will reflect the poll long given for 22.
Correct.
So we will see significant increase in the MMO for 2025, is what you do?
Theoretically, but I know in the conversations, Janet's having our actuary, they're looking at recommending asset smoothing to reduce the liability. So they're looking at that as part of the evaluation. I don't entirely know.
Okay, well, that's for another day. But today, we've got this proposal from us and, let's see, looking to approve resolution number 23 to 2023. Is the board member willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Continue, Mr. Sackey. So a motion is second to approve resolution number 23, 2023, which outlines the 2024 minimum municipal obligations for the three pension plans, the amounts described in the memo. Any board questions or comments on the motion? Any public comments or questions? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes pause zero. Agenda item number 12, discussion of possible approval of resolution number 24, 2023 authorizing the appointment of alternate members to the West Ocean Township Planning Commission. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is proposed resolution number 24-2023. This would create the position of an alternate member to the planning commission pursuant to section 203E of Municipalities Planning Code. I did provide that section for the board's review. Essentially, it allows the board to appoint at least one, but not more than three residents of the township to serve as alternate members of the planning commission. And this can be done by resolution. Just in reviewing some of the criteria that's on there, these individuals would serve four year terms, that would be the same as the members of the planning. year terms, that would be the same as the members of the planning commission. I also looked at the provisions related to compensation, and mirrored those compensation provisions to the alternate member for the zoning hearing board, so essentially they would be compensated when they have to vote on an application, just like an alternate member to the zoning hearing board would be compensated. And alternate members can participate in any proceeding or discussion by the planning commission, but they don't vote unless they are appointed as an alternate member by the chair of the planning commission for that meeting. And that's outlined in section 207 of MDC. So this does not actually appoint anybody to these positions, it just creates the ability for the board to appoint people to these positions.
Yep.
Just a clarification on that last point there. When does an alternate member become seated, quote unquote, as per section 207?
So it could be in the case of, you and I are member planning commission, you have somebody who is, you know, conflicted out at voting on an application because it involves their property, they can be seated then. It could be in the case of not having a quorum at the meeting, or it would be your quorum requirements. Those would be the typical scenarios that they would be avoiding.
And at what point would they become seated by the chair? Would that be the day of the meeting?
It could be theoretically, yes, but you probably want to determine that in advance, so we know. Particularly in an instance where you may or may not have a quorum, we probably want to know that in advance, if we do or do not have a quorum.
So basically, it's at the discretion of the chair to make that decision.
Correct. And Brian, whoever is appointed by the board, Brian would continue to, would provide them the same correspondence and information that we provide to other members of the planning commission.
It's a good way to get people involved, and then they sit as alternates, and some regular members pays off, you know, no longer get appointed, or don't want to do it anymore, then these alternate members kind of experience.
Sure. And you create adventure.
And that's, and that's essentially what we've done with the zoning hearing board.
All right, so moving forward, assuming we approve this resolution, what would be the next step then for individuals who might be interested in being alternates? They should submit a letter of intent?
Correct.
To the council manager?
Correct. So we would advertise these positions as being available, presumably using our newsletter, and then we would collect applications, they would then be interviewed by the board of supervisors, and the board could appoint them accordingly.
Sounds good. Okay.
Motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
To approve resolution?
Resolution.
I'll say that.
So the motion is second to approve resolution 24, 2023, creating the position of an alternate member of the West Coast Township Planning Commission. Okay, is there any questions or comments from the board? Any public comments or questions?
I think this might be a good idea, because sometimes, I mean, I've been asked, because I don't listen, my mom's not, sometimes we just don't have enough members at the meetings, and maybe if we have some backups, it might be a good thing.
We run into that situation twice in the last year.
Kids enjoy being super fun. So it sounds like a good idea. I just would, I guess Doug Stewart, the chair, he can kind of coordinate with the new people, with the older people, and make sure whoever's absent, you know, let them know, and make the voting kind of smooth, you know? It's just.
Any other questions? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Motion passes four zero. Agenda item number 13, ratification of bills to be paid from the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste recycling fund, the capital reserve fund, that was dated August 1st, 2023. So these bills were on the previous board's meeting that was approved, right?
Correct.
And we.
We need to ratify them.
Need to ratify, we did not have to vote to approve, is that right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make the motion to ratify the bills to be paid from those funds for the August 1st, 2023 meeting.
A second.
Is there any board of comments or questions?
I just have one question. Great valley.
No, that's the next one. That's the next one. Oh, wait, is that, you're looking at the August meeting? Or the current meeting?
I was reading the, it's July, July, I understand.
Well, that's when the, that's when the board was.
Yeah.
Where's the date of the actual?
Well, the date's on the cover sheet for August 1st.
Yep. Do we have a question on those bills? Okay, what was it, Dina?
Yeah, it's all this. I was just wondering what repair the road was made for 1,188.
Which page is that?
Nine. Let me see mine. Great valley. You want?
It was one of our parks buildings, because that account number is our parks. I can look into that.
That's my question.
Okay. So you have a solid, solid type of page.
It was, it was clearly one of, in one of our park facilities, because that lineup, 01454, those are, that is the parks maintenance area.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Is there any public comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, take it, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on the, motion passes four zero. And the last agenda item is number 14, which is approval of the bills to be paid for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, waste recycling fund, the capital reserve fund, that's dated 9/5. Any board comments or questions on the bills to be paid? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve bills to be paid for these funds, just for a second.
No, sir.
Thank you, John. Any board comments or questions on the bills? Any public comments or questions? All right, take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Motion passes four zero. So motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, actually, I'll second. All in favor of adjourn, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Steve.
So you guys push the button. Can I, can I really complete the sidewalk?
Well, we did an approval of doing that, Brian. We need to get our title creation. We need to add more to these things. We're processing there a little bit, so these guys are on the blind side of the meeting with us.
I think the good thing, this is something we can discuss, is maybe a board may for policy, planning permission, that, because the way it's written, it's strictly top two guys. It's not, it's not showing the way yours is written.